Good evening. I am now calling to order the regular board meeting for May 14th for the Chico Unified School District Board of Trustees. If there is any closed, any public comment on closed session items, we'll hear that now. Seeing none, the board will go into closed session. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. It is great to see you all here. Thank you for being here. You got some friends over there. Hi. Welcome, all of you, to the May 14th regular meeting of the Chico Unified School District Board of Trustees. We are back from closed session where we did take one action. The board voted four to zero with Member Conken absent to ratify a settlement agreement to resolve a special education dispute against the district. Pursuant to that agreement, the district authorized educational assessments and services for an eligible special education student and agreed to reimburse a portion of the parents' attorney's fees. Under the express terms of the agreement, the board's ratification of agreement does not constitute an admission of liability by the district. Having said all that, would you please rise and join me for the flag salute? Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberties and justice for all. Thank you. And with that, I will hand it over to Superintendent Staley.
Thank you. As anybody that comes to or watches our board meetings on a regular basis, you know we always start off on a really high note, the best of the best. And tonight, Shasta is in the house. So I'd like to introduce Shasta Principal Bruce Baynard, and he's going to tell us all about what we're going to see.
Thank you, Kelly. We are super excited to be here tonight. I have with me a group of fabulous third graders, and we are here to promote our 50th Grandparents' Friends and Family Day. With the exception of the Almond Bowl, I believe it is the longest standing tradition in Chico Unified. And so next Friday, May 23rd, will be our Grandparents' Day, and it is, the best way I can describe it, it's an open house on steroids. Every class has something that they're doing besides just showing off what they've done all year. And it always concludes with the fabulous All-School Sing. And I'm happy to introduce Mr. McKenzie. He is our music teacher, and he has been working with our students getting ready for our All-School Sing. So I'll let him take over and talk about all the great things that you will see if you come next Friday.
Thank you, Mr. Baynard, and thanks to the parents that brought all these kids here. And, and thanks for the board, for all you do and for having us here today. When I asked my third grade, who would be interested in coming here and singing tonight, I had 39 kids show up to the audition. They all got an invitation, and I think we have 21 of them right here. Not all of them can make it, but I'm pretty excited about that. And as we're transitioning from the fifth grade band to the fourth and fifth grade choir choral program next year, this is, this is going to be my fourth grade chorus singers, and then, of course, there'll be fifth graders. It's going to be very exciting. And I thought that we should stand for "America the Beautiful," which will be our first number, Sorry about that. I thought I hit the pause button. You never know. As, as Mr. Baynard mentioned, this is our 50th Grandparents' Day, and so our theme is decades. So we are choosing each grade level chose an iconic tune from the decade spanning from the 60s to the 2000s. And so our number here, selected by the third grade, is the very iconic and 1978 hit YMCA.
Hi, I'm Mila, and I'm from Shasta, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, I'm Madison, and I'm from third grade, and yeah.
Hello, my name is Finn, and I'm from Shasta, and I'm from fourth grade.
Hi, my name is Ari Sella, and I'm at, and I'm from Shasta School, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Carly. I'm from Shasta Elementary School, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I am from third grade.
Hi, my name is Presley. I'm at, I go to Shasta, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Sophie, and I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Amanda, and I'm, go to Shasta Elementary in third grade.
Hi, my name is Savannah, and I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Eleanor, and I'm in Shasta, and I go to third grade.
Hi, my name is Leona, and I'm also going to Shasta, and I'm in the third grade.
Hi, my name's Addison. I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Bailey. I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Lexi, and I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Mila. I go to Shasta Elementary, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Blakely, and I go to Shasta Elementary School, and I'm in third grade.
Hi, my name is Macy, and I'm in third grade, and I go to Shasta.
Hi, my name is Abby, and I'm in third grade, and I go to Shasta Elementary.
Hi, my name is Madeline. I'm in third grade, and I go to Shasta Elementary.
Hi, my name is Hannah. I'm in third grade, and I go to Shasta Elementary.
How about that? So if you would like to hear all the other decades that are going to be represented, come next Friday to Shasta Elementary from nine to noon for our 50th Grandparents' Friends and Family Day. Let's give another round of applause to all of our third graders. And to Mr. McKenzie for everything that he's doing to get these kids ready for primetime. Thank you. Oh, okay. We're going to let them go give hugs, take pictures. So what you may or may not know, oh, no, hey, no, you all need to stay. Sorry. You're not allowed to leave yet. Stay here. All right. We need to take pictures. What, what you may not know about how the decades were chosen, we had a trivia contest at a staff meeting where each grade level had to identify the bands and musical singers from throughout the years. And so kindergarten did not do well. Fifth grade did not do well. Fourth grade got first pick, so come see what fourth grade has to offer next Friday. But I am also here to present our superintendent's awards for this, this month, and I feel especially honored because, as far I know, this is the last superintendent's award that Kelly Staley is going to be presenting before her upcoming retirement. So this is a very special thing for, for me to be able to do because these two honorees are long overdue in being recognized by the superintendent, by the board, by the district. I'm going to start first with Kika Alexander. I've worked with Kika for 13 years, and she is currently our ELD aide and our office, office assistant in charge of attendance, but she's more than that. When I first got my job as a principal, I talked to my mom, who is a human resources director for a Fortune 500 company, and the best advice she gave me is surround yourself with people that are good at the things that you aren't good at. And Kika is the best at the things that I'm not good at. She is supremely organized, so organized that whenever a school needs help with their blue jackets, they call on her. And so there was a year where she was doing blue jackets not just for Shasta but for three other schools, and she was able to manage it without ever missing a beat at what she was doing at our school. She's tenacious. There is nothing that gets by her. So if you are absent, she will find out why you're absent, and she will make sure that you are back at school as quickly as possible. She's totally aware of all their surroundings. When we had cameras installed in front of our office to make sure that we only kept people coming in that were supposed to be in there, we didn't need that because we had Kika. She could see the people coming and knew exactly who they were, knew what car they drove, knew who the kids were, and knew why they were late to school that day. She, she is the glue that holds Shasta together. I have an amazing office manager, an amazing health aide, but really, at the end of the day, when you come into the office, she is the one. I have an amazing office manager, an amazing health aide, but really, at the end of the day, when you come into the office, she is the one that's going to greet you first and know everything that you need to get out of what we have at school. I created a position for her because I saw a need for somebody who spoke Spanish in our office. And she was reluctant at first because she didn't think her Spanish was good enough, but she has become an integral part of what we do at Shasta. She is the absolute best and that's why we have so many staff members here because they recognize what she does, not just for the school but for the school community. And I can't tell you enough, Kika, how much I appreciate what you do and how much I love working with you every day. I also have decided that I'm never going to make a bet with her again because every time I do, I lose. And it's usually because her football team bests my favorite football team, so I'm not going to do that anymore. So I am very excited and happy to award you the Superintendent's Award, Kika. All right, our next honoree is for our certificated honoree and again, this is way overdue. I have been at Shasta now for 13 years. I have hired every teacher there except for four. And this is one of the four that I didn't hire. And I thank my stars every day that she was around when I got there and continues to be there. Heather Kindop is the most selfless person I've ever met. Regardless of what is going on in her life, she cares more about everybody around her than she cares about herself. And it's hard to watch sometimes because I know what she's going through, but at the same time, I know how much she cares about everybody else. She knows everything about everybody. Every year she sends out a "hey, what are your favorite things?" list. I never turn mine in, but I'm still inundated with all the things that I love the most because she knows and she remembers. Every year I get a Christmas present from her that's filled with cow tails, the worst candy imaginable, but she knows that that's what I love and so that's why she continues to give them. She was a 1st grade teacher and while she was struggling with some severe health problems, she had two students that decided that instead of being students, they wanted to be cats. And they would purr on her legs and lick her legs. And while she was going through these major health problems, she loved on these kids and they are getting ready to graduate from high school this year. And I can't wait to see them, you know, come back and talk to Mrs. Kindop. While she tried to teach them numbers, I think my favorite story that she told me, there was one, she would work with her for hours. Like, "This is the number 7, this is the number 7, okay, this is 7, this is 7, okay, what number is this?" And the little girl would say, "Purple." And she got them to read at grade level. And she is the glue that holds the 2nd grade team together. She, she makes all the copies despite me complaining that the copy costs are too much. She does it. She will take any student in that, you know, has any kind of issue and she brings them in and loves on them and gets them to grade level. She is the kindest person I've ever met and she's the kindest person that I think anybody on staff has ever met because that's who she is. She cares more about everybody else than she does about herself. I love that about her. I, I can't imagine a world without somebody as positive and kind as Heather Kindop. So Heather Kindop, thank you very much for everything that you do for all of us here at Shasta, running our Shasta sunshine and just being everything to everybody all the time. So let's give a round of applause to Heather Kindop, please. And I know she hates this because she doesn't like to have the spotlight shown on her, but she is our mentor. When I got to Shasta, I didn't know the Shasta way and she sat me down and told me, "Now, this is how things go around here." And it has served me very well, so thank you very much. Thank you very much, Board. I hope to see everybody here next Friday for our 50th Grandparents' Day. If you get there early, I've got two parking spots reserved for you, but if you get there late, good luck. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baynard and all of Shasta, thank you for being here and supporting the kids and your amazing staff. We're going to transition just a little bit under the Superintendent's Report and I think as everybody is aware, we did have a fire at Pleasant Valley High School. We want to give you just a brief update and Jaclyn Krueger is going to do that right now.
All right, good evening, Board. Tonight I am providing an update related to the fire that occurred at the D building at Pleasant Valley High School back on Friday, April 25th. The fire was successfully contained to just the D building with no fire damage sustained to any other structures. The district wants to deeply, are deeply appreciative of the prompt and effective response by both Chico Fire Department and Cal Fire. It is through their efforts that they were instrumental in limiting the fire's impact to just one single building. A cause and origin fire investigator was on site following the incident and is currently conducting an investigation. Once his investigation has been completed, we will expect a report within 30 days to hopefully have the origin of the fire and the cause of the fire. At this time, the D building has been deemed structurally unsafe for occupancy. A safety plan is being finalized this week to address the structural integrity, specifically shoring up the roof trusses and the walls, which will allow for interior restoration work to begin. Following the removal of the contents, a comprehensive damage review process will occur and will begin to define the scope of the necessary reconstruction and repairs necessary. Please note, we don't have a definitive timeline on when the building's full return to occupancy will occur. I do also want to assure the Board and the community that the district does carry insurance for this type of event, so we will be covered. And going forward, as we receive additional information and have progress related to the restoration process, I will be updating the Board.
Any questions from the Board at this point? We will give updates. So with every cloud, and in this case, it was a big smoky black cloud, there is a silver lining and we had so many staff members come together. But tonight, we want to honor one that you all know very well. And if Mr. Patrick Bocetti would come down and quit hiding behind that computer up there. Patrick literally worked endless hours to make sure that the school was back up and running. And a funny little story, I showed up there and we had a company, we'll just say a company, there, we didn't have power, we didn't have internet. And I said, "Okay, are we up?" And they look at Patrick and they said, "Do you think this man will let us leave until you have it all ready to go?" And I said, "No, I don't." So thank you, Patrick. And Jaclyn, if you want to say a...
Yeah, I want to say in this instant, Patrick's tenacity to really put the students first was at the forefront. All he kept thinking about is, "How do we get school up and running on Monday? How do we get school up and running on Monday?" And he spent, like Kelly said, hours and hours and hours that weekend ensuring that the students at PV were able to be there on Monday. And he worked with Damon to make sure they had placement in other, in other areas and more importantly, we had internet related to that school site. So thank you, Patrick, I really appreciate it.
And I just want to reiterate what an amazing achievement that is. We had a fire on Friday and our admin team and our MNO team came together and we lost a building that houses maybe, what, hundreds of students on a given day and school still opened on Monday. That's an amazing testament to the work that this staff does, so thank you all very much for that.
And honestly, the Pleasant Valley High School administrative team were absolutely outstanding. I'm pretty sure they got no sleep that whole weekend, but they made it happen for their kids and staff, so huge kudos to them. And that concludes my report, back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We are going to move on to announcements. First, I would like to see whether there is a representative from CSEA who would like to share the CSEA member-to-member recognition. Hello?
Is this on? Hi, everybody. Thank you, Chico Unified School Board and District Office for supporting classified employees. With classified, a week next week, we know how important and valuable classified our employees to schools and our public education. I'd like to introduce Celia Bianco, CSEA Chapter 110, Chapter Communications Officer.
Hello, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share this with you. My name's Celia Bianco, I'm an accountant in fiscal services and I'm the CSEA Chapter 110 Communications Officer. And I'm here to present the May Chapter 110 Member of the Month. So please join us to recognize and celebrate Mariah Martine Vargas, who is a bilingual targeted case manager at McManus. She's been with the district for two years and I've had a couple of conversations with her and what really shone through was her absolute love for the kids. She said she loves connecting with them and getting them what they need. She was nominated by a coworker, Mia Mitchell, who's a health aide at McManus. And I spoke with Mia as well as, I spoke with her and it was really heartfelt, everything she had to say. She said that it is amazing to have such a wonderful coworker. She said, "I feel like we're really collaborating and helping the kids together and makes the job rewarding." And that, "I know she's there for the kids, but sometimes she calms me down when I get stressed." I need a coworker like that. Anyhow, and she also said, "The very professional," and this last one I really identified with in it, she said that, "Mariah makes me feel like I'm not alone on the ship." And I think we can all agree that we all want to feel like that at work and that we deeply appreciate the coworkers that make that possible. So please join us in thanking Mariah for everything you do, for the students and for your coworkers. So on behalf of CSEA, the kids and your coworkers, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. At this time, if there are any announcements from Board members for the public, I have one, which is simply that I got the honor and pleasure of attending a ceremony on Monday to celebrate 203 seniors from PV and Chico High who earned their state seal of civic engagement. I want to give a huge shout out to Beth Burton and Gina Snyder for organizing, for pushing the district to pick up that seal as part of their academic program. It's amazing watching these students and seeing how prepared they are to continue to engage productively with their community as they head out after graduation is inspiring. It was really great to see, so just shout out to them. Anything else from the rest of the Board? I mean, it is graduation season, so I'm sure we'll have a lot to celebrate in the next month. So we are going to move on to items from the floor. During Items from the Floor, it's a time for speakers from the public to address the Board about things that are not on the agenda. So if you came for a specific item that is on the agenda, like maybe the CIF survey results, please, we have you all marked down. But if there's anything else you'd like to talk about, we would love to take speakers on Items from the Floor now. I don't see anyone, so we'll move on. That said, the next item is the consent calendar. Does any member of the Board wish to pull an item from the consent calendar for further discussion? Anything need to be pulled by staff? Okay. In that case, is there a motion regarding the consent calendar? Or is there public input regarding any items on the consent calendar, I should say? No? Okay. Do we have a motion regarding the consent calendar?
Mr. President, I move we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Very good. We have a motion from Member Robinson and a second from Vice President Conkin. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, this is our first vote of the day, we will ask for a roll call vote, starting with Member Olson.
Olson, aye.
Conkin, aye.
Lando, aye.
Hey, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It is unanimous, thank you. The consent calendar has passed and we'll move on to the meat of our meeting. If I can find among my many pieces of paper here, where we're going to start with it. We are on to Item 9, right, the Board Workshop. This is an informational-only item regarding our work supporting at-risk students and the effects of block scheduling and alternative education programs on those students.
I got the high school secondary team up here, so we're going to give you a lot of information. Before we get started, I do want to say thank you to our two Board members that facilitated this workshop. Our, starting from left to right, my left, Erica Sheridan from Chico High School, Damon Whitaker from PV High School, Mr. Andrew, and I'm going to make sure I say his last name correctly even though it's spelled phonetically different, so, Mr. Maul. And then, of course, Rhonda Odlum. And so tonight, I believe, is going to be a very wide workshop because you're going to be able to see the top-down about how all the pieces of the puzzle fit together to support our students. And so I think it's very important that, you know, we, we ask questions and that's what we're here and we're prepared for and it's going to be very informational. So with that, we'll start with the clicker and let's go to the first one. So I, I think to be able to address this Board Workshop, we need to be able to define what an at-risk student is. And so there are some factors that are out there, but I do want to say this is not just these factors. As we all know, there are many other factors that do encompass at-risk students. But for the presentation and to be able to give our audience and yourselves a target, this is what we're going to have tonight. So first one, academic performance, that includes poor grades, missing assignments, or lack of effort in school. We go on to attendance, we would call frequent absences, tardies, or longer than that. Social-emotional behavior, disruptive behavior, emotional and behavioral problems that can hinder a student's progress. I do want to say that COVID did bring that about, a lot of students with social-emotional behavior. Disconnection, lack of interest in academics or feelings, of disconnection from school can definitely negatively affect student engagement. We have health concerns, financial concerns, and then not attaining a high school diploma. And that is a critical factor that places students at a higher risk. We, we all know that, you know, a student that graduates with a CUSD diploma has a better chance in their future than one that does not. So just want to provide that. And with that, I am going to invite Erica, please come on up. And Damon, of course.
Okay, so thank you for allowing us to present this to you tonight. A little bit of the history of the block schedule, I will say that Gail Olson was a member of the Pleasant Valley High School staff during this time period and she was very instrumental in the pursuit of the block's schedule, both from an administrative standpoint but also from the CUTA standpoint. She was very collaborative with us through this whole process, including the research team and doing findings about what works best, what innovative schedule might be important for a school like Pleasant Valley as well as Chico. And so that goes back to the history of it. So members from both Pleasant Valley High School and Chico High School, and John Shepherd was the principal at the time, was also very instrumental in developing this research team. And the research team... And the research team from both schools collaborated, and they looked at different innovative schedules. They even took trips to visiting schools to look at their schedules, to find out again what works best. Through this process, they determined that an innovative schedule was necessary, and they based it off of 14 dilemmas. And the 14 dilemmas are linked there. I'm not gonna go through all the dilemmas, but a couple of the dilemmas that were pretty important were ELD, special education students during a six-period day were really having a difficult time fitting in electives in their schedule because of the intervention classes that they were required to take to support them. And so that was one reason. Another reason was some of our advanced placement students in a six-period day were finding it difficult to add in really popular electives like student government. They had to make a choice. Do I take my AP course, or do I opt to take student government class, which is a very popular class there? And so they had a dilemma as well. And so there was many more dilemmas that are on that link, if you want to look at that link. But that led to, again, a collaborative effort between the research team from both schools and ed services at Chico Unified, looking at innovative schedules and what might be best representation for our students. Again, I want to point out that through this whole process with the history, students were at the forefront of the thought process, the decision-making for the research team and for ed services at the district level. The block schedule started with Chico High School beginning and implementing it first in 2021, '22, followed by Pleasant Valley High School the following year. Chico High, and I'll let Erica talk a little bit more about their schedule, but Chico High implemented a block schedule a little differently that first year. And then we came along with a different schedule. We opted for an anchor day our first year versus Chico High, who didn't have an anchor day. And so I don't know if you want to share anything about that.
Sure. I was part of the research team that also got to travel and go check out other schools. And we actually modeled a lot of what we did at both schools after Rockland High. And so a lot of us, when we walked through Rockland and saw the schedule, we're like, okay, that's it. Let's pack it up. We're done. So we went with the AB, eight-period rotating block. A lot of the schools we talked to said the anchor day has some hindrances. So we just took their word and said, okay, we'll listen to you guys. You've tried it and exited it. So we went with that, and that's kind of been the schedule that we've stuck with so far.
If I could jump in for just a second. I was at the tables, if you guys remember, when we were going through this and identified those 14 problems and things. And the way you skipped through it, and I know that's the way we've designed the presentation, but it doesn't represent the blood, sweat, and tears that actually was going on at those tables, talking about being able to pull this off. We believed in it, was the number-one thing. Wanted to make it work for the kids, wanted, you know, and had so many roadblocks, financially, contract issues that we were gonna have to go through that. I don't know about you, John, but I didn't really hold out much hope for getting it anytime soon. So the fact that the district was able to pull this off in conjunction with partnership, basically too, with CUTA. They were part of this working relationship. I just, I want everyone to understand just how much struggle and thought went into pulling this together. And yes, Rockland was a big help. But Chico Unified did their due diligence as well and convinced the rest of us that we're just, you know, the board members and otherwise, sitting there at the tables, that this really was going to benefit the students, which was the number-one thought to begin with. And then after we identified those 14 things and went, oh my gosh, it's a mess. But it turned out not to be a mess because of the work that Chico Unified's personnel, all of us, did in pulling this off. So I wanted to recognize that before we spent 15 seconds on the next topic.
Well, I also think the COVID era played a huge role because we were seeing the huge learning loss coming through and trying to look at, how can we attack that and solve that? And so that was another, that wasn't part of the dilemma pile, but it was definitely a dilemma that we needed to address.
Well, and if I may add, I was just gonna bring that up during COVID. We saw learning loss, but we also saw students disengaged, not participating, and failing. And students were many credits behind. One of, that was like a huge dilemma, and how do you meet that need in a six-period day? You can't. And so the end result is that students are kind of set up to fail. And so the block schedule just really allowed students to get back on the horse. Kelly, you'll like that one. Get back on the horse and be successful.
All right. Sorry to move along, Eileen. We are gonna talk about some of the interventions that we were able to put into play. And as Damon said, over the years since implementation, we continue to look at student needs. So we're not done with the intervention list. We kind of keep examining, are things working, are they not? Where's another gap? How do we fill that gap? Some of the things that we did put into play in the beginning, and a lot of these are still in play, adding academic success for ninth and 10th, and this is like a support class. It's one of the eight periods that these ninth and 10th graders take. A lot of the teachers have Google Classroom, and they have mini lessons for them. Basically like executive functioning skills, how to check your email, how to email a teacher, how to check your Aries, how to deal with missing assignments, how to talk to a teacher with your missing assignments. So that's been a very successful class. And we've added it also for some of our 11th and 12th grade students that are struggling for one of their classes. Additional support we have is Math Lab, and it rides along enrollment in a core class. So it's an extra support class in math. Likewise, we have Power Reading using the Read 180 curriculum. We use some junior high reading data to kind of determine which freshmen are not quite at grade level and put them in that class. A newer class on the books is an English class for newcomers. We saw a huge influx of English learners and kind of a panic of, you're here, you're a junior. How are you gonna do junior English? We've got to get you in an English class. So we've created, both sites have created this English class for newcomers, where students that are new to the US within three years have an opportunity to take this class for one year for extra support, and then they will go into their grade-level appropriate class. And we found great success. This year, we ran it. Great success with that. In fact, the teacher wants to hang on to the kids, and we're like, no, no, no. They have to go. They have to go. Lots of opportunity for co-teaching, and this is a newer way for Chico Unified with special education and having a gen ed teacher with a special ed teacher partnering. And that has been very successful. But again, the block schedule has allowed us to have a little more flexibility for that to occur. At Chico High, do you have PE enrichment? Okay. At Chico High, we have PE enrichment, which offers supports in physical education for students with disabilities. And we have mentor students that partner in that class. And we also partner with Chico State. So we go over to Chico State and use the BeWell Lab over there. We use the iXL curriculum at both sites. We have peer tutoring at both sites. And again, we're not done yet. This is just a glimpse of some of the interventions that we're able to do with the block schedule. But I think at both sites, we're both still looking at student data, the state dashboard, having conversations with kids and families and staff to try to figure out what other things do we need to build that will continue to keep our kids successful. In addition, we have online academies at both sites, Viking Online Academy and Panther Online Academy. As you know, our campuses are massive cities, basically, right? We have over 2,000 kids and adults at both sites. And sometimes that's not always the learning environment that kids succeed at. So we do have small programming that allows for online and independent study options for students. Some kids just need that as an alternative to come into campus. Some kids use it as credit recovery options if they've gotten a poor grade and they want to fix a grade to get into college. Some kids need it for NCAA eligibility, some of our athletes. So it's kind of been a nice program alternative in addition to our regular programming that we have at both sites.
Can I interrupt again?
Of course.
I get to do that when I sit up here. One of the things that we learned when I was attending the LCAP student feedback meetings, the students at the levels that we had before us, they recognized the advantages of block schedule. There was considerable amount of, not only the discussion, but the identification of exactly what you just talked about, Ms. Sheridan, was that they have a lot of flexibility that they can utilize for whatever strengths they need or the weaknesses that they have that they need to go back and fill in. Our students get it. And they are using, along with the help, I'm sure of their advisors, this block schedule to really pull things together for them. I was very pleased in listening to the students talk about the advantages, that they get it. You know, they know how to use it. They know how to get in to talk to their counselors about additional uses for the block schedule and their credit recovery, or, you know, anything else they need. So I think it's important that we recognize that the students too understand the benefit and are using it.
I agree.
Roughly how many students are using the online academies?
Chico High, we have about 90. That doesn't mean they're full-time.
But they're using the system at all? Okay.
Yeah, 90 total.
Gina?
Pleasant Valley High School is very similar numbers. We're just a little over 100.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so we've talked a lot about intervention and what the block schedule allowed us to do intervention-wise. And so when we look at multi-tiered systems of support, the block schedule was essential in giving us opportunities to provide support for students, tier one, tier two, and tier three. So when we look at those different tiers, whole-class instruction being tier one, tier two being small group, and tier three being individualized instruction, we could look at it at a broader scale, too. So these may not all be outcomes, I mean, results of a block schedule, or the block schedule may not have been the pure reason why. But because of the block schedule and all the work we did in interventions, it allowed us to expand our thinking into whole, the culture, the students on our campus, and what other intervention supports and systems could we bring in? And so we look at, we brought in the check-in and check-out process. And we had that on a small scale for this, but it's a much larger scale now, where we have wellness counselors dedicated to supporting students social, emotionally, as well as academically. And so through that, we have, like I said, the check-in, check-out. We have small group social skills activities that we do with students. Coming out of COVID, we really found, as you all know, that students were really fragile, social, emotionally. And while we probably haven't seen the end of that yet, we are seeing students who are becoming more resilient, stronger, making more vital connections with school staff in our schools because of some of the interventions that we are allowed to expand to. We do what's also called site monitoring meetings, both sites. And that's where admin, counselor, we include our student services, and we look at the whole kid, student as a whole. And through a program called EduClimber, we set it up where we can have thresholds notify us when a kid meets an intervention threshold, such as our academically disengaged students. So a student who is coming to school every day, and, but academically, they are just not engaged, so they're failing most of their classes, but they don't miss school at all. We have a threshold that's set up. The group comes together and they do like case review of that student. How can we better support that student? And again, we're looking at a multi-tiered approach to that with counselors, administrators, teachers, student services. It's a really team effort. Our MTSS coordinator works with that. So again, the block schedule allowed us to expand our thought process in ways that we hadn't originally been doing. And so we have brought in lots of different supports for students. And I can speak for Pleasant Valley High School, and Erica will be able to speak to Chico High. But again, we're seeing kids becoming more resilient. We still have some kids who are struggling academically, socially, emotionally, but the connection's a piece. And when we do sit down with those site monitoring meetings and we have that conversation with the kid, and then we begin to check in with that kid specifically with what the plan is, prescriptive plan for that student, those students generally tend to see success. And we see an uptick in what they're doing academically. We also do a lot of celebrations through MTSS for students and for staff. And we celebrate kids when they come off the DNF list. And that's a real big celebration for us at Pleasant Valley High School. And we reward those students. And so we had many students this year that started on the DNF list in that first progress report period. And by the third progress report, right before the Christmas break, we had a lot of students coming off of that list, and so we celebrate them. So we do lots of multi-tiered system supports within our classroom, within the whole school. And it's just truly a benefit of the outcomes of the block schedule that we're utilizing.
Okay. So as Damon said before, back in the day when we had the six-period day, we had certain graduate requirements like we do now. But English learners were pretty much destined to take ELD as their elective. Students on an AP were destined to take an ACT support class to make sure they could get through academically. So one of the effects of the block schedule is that now we have more equity of course offerings because the students that need support classes can still take those, but they can still also take a CTE class or a dual-enrollment class, an AP course. They're not, they're not only, their elective choice isn't just their support class now, which is an amazing thing that we have at both sites. Definitely fewer students being referred to Fairview with our independent study programs. We're able to catch kids with the eight-period day. We have a little bit of wiggle room. We did increase our credits, as you probably remember, from 235 to 250, just so that we can kind of hang on to those seniors a little bit better. We are able to enroll our ninth graders in grade-level math because we are putting that Math Lab or that extra support academic success in with that. So we have fewer sections of Math C, which is technically an eighth-grade class, which is a win. Our completion rates for CTE have definitely gone up. Our increased, our dual enrollment numbers have definitely gone up. And I missed the, oh, you did get my good numbers. Okay, never mind. I thought you didn't have them. But you can see that both sites, we've increased our ability to dual-enroll. We've increased our ability to offer AP courses because now we have more space in the schedule. I definitely think, and you have been at PB a long time, too. I definitely think I just saw a slowing down, like a calming across campus because we have less transition, we have less movement on campus. Kids are prepping for four classes each day, so their life is a little more manageable. If they're an athlete, they have time to do that while still maintaining, you know, great grades in two sets of four classes. But definitely slowed down the campus. And again, with all the block schedule stuff, we're also able to have common preps for our co-teachers. So that's helped with gen ed and co-teach specialized folks being able to talk and prep and plan.
Thank you. Me again. Question I don't remember that we were able to ask when we were putting this workshop together was, what happens when a student, say, has selected a CTE topic course, and then before the completion, they change their mind and want to look at a different option? What's the process they have to go through in order to do that?
I just say, they can. They're just not a completer in that particular pathway. I mean, every year when the students register for classes, if they decide to go a different direction, that's okay. We let them. And sometimes part of high school is just figuring out who you are and who you want to be. So if you're not a, you know, a glass designer, that's fine. Maybe you're gonna be an architect instead, or a computer engineer. I don't know. But yeah, it would mean that they might not have the time to complete, but sometimes, a lot of times, kids squeak it in, so at least that's for Chico.
Yeah, it's very similar at Pleasant Valley High School. We don't deter them if they want to do a pivot and then switch to something else. I will say this, though, that we are looking at how we can continue to increase our completion rates. And if you, that link up there will show you that we have been doing that and will continue to do that. And so we are having more conversations with students about being completers and what that looks like.
And along those lines, too, offering incentives of like the cords at graduation and making it very obvious, if you do this, you earn this type of honor. So I think that for kids... So I think that for kids, you know, as they try to figure out who they are and where they want to be, um, that also is helpful for them to see that. Questions?
Let me, let me just add really quickly. So we, we spoke a lot early in the presentation about the intervention and how wonderful and important that is. But there's also, like, if you look at these numbers, the enrichment piece is there as well through the block schedule. I think that's really important to, to note that, like Erica mentioned, our AP exams have gone up as well as our dual enrollment courses, opportunities for all students. And so, um, again, the block schedule allowed us, something that, as Gail knows, we were really, really wanting for a long time was how do we bring in intervention and enrichment to our campus on a six-period day? And like Gail mentioned before, it, it just wasn't possible. And so the block schedule has allowed us to do so much more, have so much more flexibility. And, and like Eileen, you mentioned, students love the block schedule. They really do. It's something that, um, as we transitioned to it, the adults were probably more apprehensive about it. And, and that's why we stuck with the anchor day because our teachers really wanted to see every student, uh, all their students on one day only. And then we quickly learned after that year that like Chico High knew it, it wasn't a great, um, option for the block schedule. And so we pivoted as well. But, um, students enjoy it and, um, the enrichment as well as intervention is really critical in it.
Just a little caveat. When I came to Chico Unified in, uh, fall of ninety-seven, trying to get the block schedule was something that, uh, everybody was working out at Chico High. So it's kind of interesting how long it took. So, yep. Okay, so career and college readiness. This is an indicator on our dashboard and, um, we are in yellow. But I, I do want to stress that, uh, I believe that in the past slide, and you guys can also click on it, that you'll, you'll find out that we are improving. Advanced placement exams, we have more students taking those. A to G completion, there are more opportunities. Career and technical education pathway completion. Now that becomes a little complicated and I do want to share why because the more awesome CTE classes that are out there, well, the more that students go, oh, that looks really cool. I want to take that. Oh, you know what? They have digital arts over here. They have robotics. They have welding. I mean, all of these amazing opportunities. I, I, if it was me, I would take all of them, right? But then it's very difficult for that to happen. So that's why some of the completion rates within that one, you'll see a little low. And of course, the rest of them that are up there. But I did want to share this slide with you because this is something that, you know, we, we take the heart and we, we do monitor. Okay.
Me again. I saw this and wrote a note at home. And of course, I'm not at home. The state and federal job programs. Could you identify that a little bit for us?
That is one of the qualifiers that's on the career and col- uh, college readiness definition with regards to, there has to be some type of programs out there. I'm not aware of any that, uh, Chico Unified have in place where there are certain positions that are provided to students. So that's what that is.
So other supports that are on our campuses, that just to bring to your attention, um, that definitely make an impact on our campus. We all, we both have targeted case managers. We both have two wellness counselors. We have a wellness center. Is yours called a Zenzen? Wellness center? Okay, we both have wellness centers. This year we have a reset room where we have a, a teacher that staffed to support students that are having behavior difficulties. We have learning centers. We're a part of the League of Stars with Chico State. And we also have social work interns through Chico State that support us in the wellness center as well.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Expanded to Butte College?
Yes.
Okay. Cause that wasn't part of what I saw. Thought I'd bring it up.
You are right. Can, can you tell us what is League of Stars?
Sure. So, um, and I probably can't do it as justice as maybe John did because John was instrumental in the groundbreaking of League of Stars. But, um, it's a mentorship program that, um, was, um, community-based originally and, um, through Chico State, a partnership with Chico State where, um, they supported, is it primarily BIPOC, um, students, um, to give them mentors, to give them, uh, opportunities to, um, have good role models and an opportunity to look at, um, future opportunities through, um, college and career. And so I apologize, John, maybe you can jump in and...
I just want to emphasize really two words, mentoring and a voice. We were able to connect high school students from, um, all three high schools with people who they felt could be mentors for them in their, in their own, their own perception of life and what life looked like for them in our community. So that was a, a major emphasis was the mentoring. And then having them, um, develop their voice on their campuses and looking around the room and I, and understanding that there are many people like them who are in the same situation and they could consolidate their voice and, uh, and bring that to the forefront. So mentoring and voice are really the two strongest elements of, of League of Stars.
I'm, I'm going to go back because I was very curious about the, um, state and federal job programs. Of course, when you're, don't know, what do you do? Ask Google, right? But it lists for California like ROP programs, the CCC, the California Conservation Corps. So getting, I guess, students connected to those types of programs or not even necessarily connected, but letting them know that they exist.
So, um, the next slide, um, talks about referrals to alternative education. And so, um, specifically, how is referral to alternative education done? It's, it's a simple process through the, our counseling department and, um, alternative education administration and their counselors there. But things that go into that is, um, we look at it, we have attendance meetings. Uh, we look at, um, and review students' attendance. And so sometimes students, um, because of their truancy, get referred to Alt Ed through the SARB process. Uh, there's also the expulsion process where if students, um, have ED code violations, um, we go through an expulsion hearing. So Erica or I might recommend a student based on their ED code violation to go to the expulsion hearing, which is a, um, hearing conducted, uh, much like a court proceeding where there's a panel of administrators that listen to testimony from the school about why we feel the student, um, is not placed properly or shouldn't be placed at our high school. And then there's also testimony from the families and the student as well. The panel asks questions and through that process, a student is recommended, um, for expulsion. Again, the recommended being the key word. You all as the school board have the final say on, on expulsion. So we were only a recommending body at that point in time. There's weekly counseling meetings. And then like we talked about, uh, earlier in a slide, we have our site monitoring meetings, um, that look at students and as a whole and determine whether or not that student should remain on our campus or whether or not we should look at a referral to alternative education. And you'll hear from Andy in a little bit and then he'll talk to you a little bit about, more about specifics about, uh, alternative education.
All right. So moving forward, um, like I said, we're not done. We still have a lot of work to do. One piece that, I'm just going to use Rockland as an example, but one piece that Rockland had when we did go visit, it was a thirty-minute plus period, which was an intervention and/or an enrichment period. We haven't explored, we, we've talked about it. We've explored it, but we haven't implemented it yet. But it would be taking some minutes off of every period and adding it, um, somewhere in the school day so that we could see kids more if they needed, you know, AP test prep or redo a science lab or remediation on a, on a math test or something like that. So that's an idea. Looking at, you know, hiring highly qualified aides. We have a lot of turnover in our aides. Making sure we have highly qualified aides, which our HR directors are helping us with. Hiring specialists to help with those intervention classes because it takes a special, you know, teacher to work with kids that are behind in academics. Continuing to refine our academic success curriculum and expectations that all freshmen and sophomores take. So continuing to look at that. Looking at more professional development for the co-teach model because that is, you know, an interesting dance between the gen ed teacher and the co-teach, and the special education teacher and making sure that that communication is strong. And then we, both schools are also looking at attendance and credit thresholds to positively impact attendance. So making sure kids are coming to school and taking advantage of what we have to offer. Questions?
Did you see my question mark appear?
I did, I did. It went right above you.
The statement that you just made, Erica, could you do it again? Somehow or other, I didn't follow.
Which part?
The part about the, uh, was it the attendance?
Right. So just looking at incentives to encourage kids to be on campus if, if kids are struggling.
Okay. So this is an outside of the, uh, academic structure to make, like, um, one of our insurance agencies does, a program where they give kids that improve stuff, you know, a bicycle or that ki- that's what you're referring to?
Like incentives and, and just working on like, making sure they understand the importance of being on campus.
Okay, thank you.
Well, and I appreciate you bringing that up because I, I'd like to also add that, um, both Eric and I struggle, uh, on our campuses. Uh, one of the things that the block schedule allowed students to have many classes, eight classes. So students beginning as freshmen into their senior year, second semester, if they pass all their classes, they meet that credit requirement fairly early. And so we have a lot of seniors who are eighteen and maybe even seventeen-year-olds who are not going to class, not attending class because they don't need those classes for graduation because they've already accumulated in specific areas their requirements for graduation. So another piece of that attendance threshold is, is we are looking for, uh, opportunities to apply some thresholds to seniors because we want them on our campus. We want them to be a part of the culture. They do set the tone for underclassmen. And so, but we want them to be positive role models on our campus. So a part of piece of that is looking at how we can ensure that seniors are staying in class and continuing to stay on campus.
Now we have Mr. Maul that's going to talk to you about, uh, alternative education.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, good evening. Just want to take a moment. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our amazing, uh, students and our dedicated staff. I really need to praise my secondary colleagues as well for everything it does heard and much more that they do on their campus before a student can even step foot on our campus. There's a lot of mirroring in terms of the interventions that they provide that we also provide, but just on a, on a different level in terms of possible intensity or what else can we possibly think of to support these students? So our alternative, alternative education programs within COSD are listed right there. Oakbridge is a, a little different and Ms. Odom is going to talk about that. But I, I really want to go through in terms and, uh, really kind of explain what each of these means. I know in the community, we just had some hearings today, expulsion hearings where a community member or a, a parent thought that their student was at Fairview twice through the expulsion process last year. And I had to clarify, actually, your student was at Cal for one semester and then AFC through the expulsion process for another. So I really want to start with Cal. So for seventh and eighth graders in Cal, it's a junior high credit recovery program. So students who have gone through all the interventions afforded to them at our junior highs and they're still struggling to promote to the eighth grade or to high school on time, a referral is made to Cal. And again, that's after all interventions have been exhausted and perhaps a student isn't responding to it or there's just other factors at play, um, that, that referral to Cal is made. And a student will start with us either in January or in March to, to try and finish strong and make it to that next grade level on time. Students are referred to us at the end of the school year for Cal to sta- to start the following school year in the same grade, but we work to promote them to the next grade level by the end of the first quarter in October. Cal also serves as a, um, intervention program for, uh, Fairview or Oakdale students who are academically disengaged. So once we've exhausted all of our interventions at Oakdale or at Fairview, we do look at the possibility of a student coming over to Cal in the high school group to complete the program, make some positive changes, stay connected to our staff and then make their way back over to Fairview. And in some cases, in rare cases, Oakdale again. Any questions about Cal before I move over to AFC? Yeah?
There's, there's, there's the question mark again.
Absolutely.
Well, and I found it. What I was looking for, I found on our presentation, the onsite counselor support team. If I recall what we were talking about, um, at, at both of the other secondary schools was the combination of academic counselor, wellness counselor, social worker, and I, I know what the equine connections is. I guess last year. Do you have enough of those supports? Because it seems to me that the students who've just described and looked at are the ones that really need, um, focused intervention from that support team. Where are we?
We are very fortunate with our funding. A lot of you know in terms of, um, to hire as much support as possible. We do have two intervention specialists as well in addition to two of our wellness counselors and two counselors that are assigned academically, but they do a lot of SEL supports. In addition to our tar- our targeted case managers and school psychologists, we have a ton of support and we are still, um, struggle daily to meet the needs of these students. So, I mean, if you look in ARI's documentation in terms of counseling and visitation, you're going to see that just about every student on the campus is connected to one, if not two, of our support providers in addition to targeted case managers and everybody else. So I don't think we, we could ever have enough, but we do our best to, you know, fill the offices that we do have and provide every opportunity for more and more supports.
Again, back to student input. When I was on campus last year, we were talking with students. And their descriptions of how important that, um, support team had been to them in order to bring, well, their life together as well as their academics, as well as how to survive the world. Some of your kids, our kids, are, are in places that are very difficult for them. And they recognize it. And that was one of the things they were telling us. If you, I think, yeah, you were there. Again, are the students engaged in picking up the supports from those teams?
Yes. The reason I started with Cal and AFC is to kind of paint the clearest picture possible in how long it does take a student who has been basically told they have to come to another program through the various interventions and processes like SARB and, um, expulsion and just pure credit recovery. So with the junior high students, the goal is to get back to a comprehensive site at the next semester if possible and get to that next grade level in high school on time to get all the wonderful opportunities over there. And if necessary, come back to us as the safety net. The Cal and AFC students, again, through the various processes that they go through, are the ones that struggle to really make that connection right away. It does take more than a semester in most cases for them to really trust us and understand what we're about. But when you see it, it's why we do what we do and despite the heartache that comes with everything. So, um, those students, for the most part, struggle to really connect because they've had those opportunities to connect at other sites and they did have connections and now here they are with us. So whether it's, uh, you know, lack of trust and basically it's what we do encounter the most, we do have to work very diligently to make sure that we can make that connection. And then, like I said, then for the junior high students, send them back in hopes that they, they've eliminated that barrier of mistrust when they go back to another site or a new site like the high schools that, you know, with nineteen hundred kids versus the twenty-five kids in their class at AFC and Cal.
At the, at the, um, younger grades, the targeted case managers and the, um, the, I think it's elementary wellness counselors do a lot of work. elementary wellness counselors, do a lot of work with connecting families with the supports that their students need, and then the support the family needs. What's our depth of support for our families? Because this is an area where, again, it's a team effort, and if you, if those kids are not trusting us yet, it's probably also not a case where they trust the families that are waiting for them at home yet. So, what are we doing to help all of that come together?
So, for us, I mean, like for Cal, junior high credit recovery students, it starts at orientation. We stress the importance of the partnership that we're creating right in that moment and communicating with us. We have two targeted case managers. We use categorical funding to provide another five-hour position, and in addition to our full-time TCM, so they hit the road every single day. They're doing home visits. Our wonderful counselors are hitting the road every week with our interns, so we're doing massive amounts of home visits to ask families what they need, to eliminate any barrier, whether it's transportation, which I'll get into later and whatnot, but the amount of family outreach that our team does is remarkable and is necessary, and we still struggle with, you know, getting them connected to us. So, our team is amazing. They, they work tirelessly to get connected to the families and whatever they need, we try to eliminate. Thank you. Right, so any questions about Cal? All right, so AFC, Community Day School, grades six through twelve. Yes, they're referred through the expulsion process or the SARB process or a probation referral. Those, I love being a part of the hearings, I'll be honest, the expulsion and the SARB hearings. It's an opportunity to participate and ask some intense and very personal questions and get an understanding of what the student and the family needs and why they're in front of a panel. And then from there, for me, it's really restorative versus punitive, because we're fortunate to get that information. Our office manager, Malia, does a wonderful job of creating a breakdown and overview of what that process looked like and what that specific hearing shared. The counseling referrals are made right in the moment, and so by the time the student, the student has already been working with us when they go through the expulsion process, but the SARB student is one of those that, okay, now you're with us tomorrow. So, those hearings provide wonderful insight into what the family dynamics possibly are and what the families possibly need. With AFC being six through twelve, again, getting back to a comprehensive, comprehensive site when they work through those terms and conditions on their contracts, great, we wanna get them back to their comprehensive sites. And again, whether it's high school, going to high school on time, or back to a comprehensive site to reconnect. Our high school students that have gone through the expulsion and SARB process typically end up over at Fairview, so they have a little, little quicker transition in making their way out of AFC with successful completion of the program, get connected over at Fairview more to a traditional type high school experience, and away they go with that. So, there is a revolving door of sorts. Some students who struggle to program over at AFC, we are fortunate to have Oakdale Independent Study, so just holding meeting after meeting after respite process and everything related to it. We do use Oakdale, hey, we want to keep you connected to us, maybe independent study short-term or for the long-term is, is a better fit, and if they're successful, then they could stay in the program.
I'd just like to take a moment, I don't wanna do this too often, but the comment you made about enjoying the expulsion hearings, I love that, because so many districts, our expulsion hearings are really adversarial, and for students, they're always scary. And the amount of work that our staff does, and I see many of those faces in this room right now, to really make those student-focused, how can we continue to serve and support you conversations, it's one of my very favorite things about the way we do things at Chico Unified, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm super proud to be a part of it for a long time. Again, and then Fairview, continuation school, I'm not a big fan of the word continuation school, because our wonderful staff have worked very hard to, over the years, go away from a traditional, I hate the P-word, packet-type model, and really look to close the achievement gap for students that have been referred to us through, whether it's pure credit recovery, SARB or expulsion. So, kudos to our staff over the past fifteen years, and really look into support students from a literacy perspective, and not just a credit recovery, get you graduated and away you go. Yes, Fairview is our, the hub, if you will, serving our ninth through twelfth graders to get them graduated, not just from credits, but also, you know, workforce-ready, view college-ready, or try and connect them to a vocational school of any type, so. And then, of course, we have our Oakdale program, but we're gonna tie into that right here.
Hello, sorry. I would like to first formally introduce myself to the new and continuing board members. So, my, my name is Rhonda Odlum. I am the principal of Oak Bridge, the assistant principal for Oakdale, and I oversee the Chico Unified medically necessary instruction program. So, going from there, we have two different independent studies in alternative ed. We have Oakdale, which is located on the alternative ed campus. It focuses on credit recovery. They deliver their curriculum through Google Classroom. We serve grades in sixth through twelfth. We have a lot of students that try it, and maybe it's not a good fit, or maybe they need it for a bit as like a respite from the daily attendance, so the mobility rate is seventy-five percent over a year, so a lot of in and out. Oak Bridge is located on East Lassen and Cohasset. It focuses on college prep coursework, including world languages and advanced placement, and we use the Edgenuity curriculum. And we use Edgenuity for our grades six through twelve, but we do serve kindergarten through twelfth grade, so we're the only, we are the Chico Unified K through five option within Chico Unified. That being said, same with Oakdale, we do have a high mobility rate with students coming and trying it, and they think, oh, it's gonna be so easy, I'm gonna do independent study, piece of cake, I get to be at home all day. And they, then they find, you know what, doing it at home and having that self-motivation to stay on task when nobody's looking over me is harder than it sounds. So, kids coming out, and sometimes that's just what they need. They need a semester away from whatever their experience at school, and then they're ready to go back and see their friends. So, we definitely serve a need of, for kids, for whatever duration they need us.
So, how is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But how is that mobility really calculated? Is it anyone who comes in and then leaves before graduation?
Within one year, somebody that doesn't.
Complete that.
Starts on August nineteenth and leaves before the end of the school year.
Okay.
So, just in one solid year.
Thank you.
Yeah. What's similar about both of them? So, they have different focuses, for sure, but they're both independent studies, so we have the same audit compliance paperwork that we have to do. We support students that are needed alternative setting. Students that go to alternative independent study, sometimes they need to work, whether it's, you know, they just wanna work, or maybe it's supporting their family, maybe they're dealing with some anxiety, maybe going to school is really stressful, the big classes are overwhelming, and what was the other thing? I can't think of the other thing right now. Both schools use an online curriculum. Like I said, Oakdale does Google Classroom, Oak Bridge uses Edgenuity, and I wanna note that in the kindergarten through fifth grade, though, we do use some Google Classroom, but we do do textbooks for ELA and math, because those littles need to practice their handwriting skills, and being on the computer all day isn't appropriate for them. So, for Oakdale and Oak Bridge, we do both have Reg to Go programs, so we wanna get all of our students off to college. We have some students at Oak Bridge that go straight into the UC system all throughout the United States. And then, I see a question.
Yeah, so I was curious, what about your, your students that are in sixth through twelve that also don't tolerate being on the computer? Like, is, are there, is there no independent study option for them? Like, is there no bookwork or, you know, sort of, I'm, I was curious about that, because I teach independent study.
Yeah.
And I have students that, especially coming out of COVID, the last thing they wanna do is be on a computer. And so, I mean, they, we have the option of Edgenuity, we offer Edgenuity, but I have zero students, not one of my students have chosen to do Edgenuity. So, I was just wondering, so what do you guys do for students who, who don't want to be online?
Absolutely. I would agree, some students are not a fan of Edgenuity. That's why having Oakdale and using Google Classroom is, Google Classroom is what's used all throughout all Chico Unified, whether they're going to English at PV or English at Bidwell, most of those teachers are using Google platform, Google Classroom to push their assignments through. So, that's more of a comfortable thing for them, and so that's the option a student like that would probably do. So, it's just the same assignment you would have in front of you, but it's just in Google Classroom that you bring up.
So, again, do you guys print out assignments if that's what they need? Like, rather than working on the computer? Like, I also taught English nine, and I had Google Classroom, and, you know, I did lots, and Google Classroom's awesome for subplans, because then there's no way that, you know, your subplans can get lost or whatnot, but, and of course, my freshmen were very familiar with using Google Classroom and knew what the expectation was. But again, that sitting and working, you know, it was designed, working on a computer, and I always prayed that, you know, we wouldn't lose internet connectivity, because then my substitute would have nothing to do.
Yeah.
It would be like, oh, no. So, I, again, I'm just saying, if a student requires, you know, paperwork, if that's what their need is, how do we accommodate that?
So, Oak Bridge, we don't have an alternative curriculum to Edgenuity that's available. That's the only curriculum that's available. We do do printed guided notes, so students can take notes as they go, that's, matches what they're learning in the curriculum. With Oakdale, we do have some printed options. Typically, it's for students that have IEPs that need to have a different option than just using the Google Classroom. And I, I know that PV and Chico High both have traditional, what we call traditional independent studies, where they all use textbooks and printed materials. So, it kind of is, you know, what are you looking for? And we look in the district, we kinda see it as a whole, like, our district has all these different options, and if you're looking for this, maybe this is the best spot for you. And so, we kinda look at it as a buffet of what's gonna be best for the student. So, Oakdale, their teachers, the students come in twice a week for a two-hour block of time to get support and have lessons with their teacher. They use digital curriculums through Google Classroom, they use Study Sync, CPM Math, they use iXL, Know Ready, and Pathful. Pathful is a career awareness program. Interventions if a student's needing some more support from a teacher, they're not having a hard time completing their schoolwork at home, we do have a study hall on Fridays for additional time. Students can do a hybrid option at Oakdale, where they take one to two classes at Fairview as well. A lot of students will take advantage of their welding program or construction program, something that you wouldn't be able to do in an independent study. They have credit recovery options, being part of the alternative ed model, so there's four sessions, so more opportunity to make up credits, and also extra learning activities. And the lovely thing about being on alternative ed, they have access to all the great support services in the counseling office. Some of the career exploration things we do at Oakdale and within alternative ed, it's a partnership, since we're on the same campus, is there's a career day, we use Pathful, and then we integrate career exploration assignments to help give the students some path with what they're gonna do after high school, because many of the kids, you ask them, what do you wanna do? I don't know. So, we feel strongly with trying to connect them with something when they leave, leave us at twelfth grade, they have an idea.
More detail of what you just said, somehow or other, either I lost you or you lost What is it you were describing about the student using that platform to connect with what they wanted to do with career or college or something? Explain that again.
Yeah, so there's an online curriculum called Pathful, and it has, like, career exploration, there's a diagnostic test where they can take it, and it kinda gives them suggestions on, based on your, this assessment, these are pathways that you might be interested in. And then it also goes into, so say, construction came up as a area of possible interest, then there's more information about construction within that website. And the teachers can assign, assignments from that website for the students to use, so it's not just free exploration, it's actually, can be teacher-assigned.
And where, where does the support from staff come for whatever it is the student finds in this exploration? Say they, they do take an interest in the construction, how would they be connecting with someone who can show them that construction is plumbing and electrical and architecture and?
Yes.
That's what we love about Pathful. So, Pathful, it's also a virtual job shadow program, so as a teacher supports the students in navigating, once they take the, the assessment in terms of their interests and things like that, they're correcting, guides them to ultimately, if a student takes it the entire way, it leads to like a virtual job shadow type program. So, we actually use it for three careers classes at Fairview.
Use it for what, sir?
So, a careers class at Fairview, so the teacher facilitates the lessons within Pathful, you know, they take the assessment, they build a portfolio, all of our seniors are required to take it, actually, so it actually, with the portfolio, there's a resume building, everything embedded through it, and it leads to specifically, it guides them almost, I can't say what, you would get a path, a pathway at PV and Chico High, but that's the intent of the program, is to really focus on, you know, based on that diagnostic, what their interest inventory was, and focuses on that and guides them through the curriculum.
And it's Pathful?
Pathful.
Yeah, it's right there, under career exploration, career day, Pathful, integrated career. A Pathful.
Oh, way down there. Okay, thank you. I did miss that. Thank you.
Okay, and now over to Oak Bridge Academy. Oak Bridge was started, for those that are you new, in two thousand and eighteen as another independent study option within Chico Unified, to be competitive with some of our charter schools that we were losing students to. So, it's an online independent study using Edgenuity, all of our courses are college prep, they meet NCAA requirements, and they're, meet the A through G requirements. So, it's set up a little bit different. Our high schoolers come in once a week to meet with their teacher. Teacher goes over the work for the week, looks at their assessments, helps them with anything that they need help with. Our junior, I didn't put it on here, but our junior high, I don't think I did, yeah, our junior high students come in a couple times to meet with the, their teacher. We found that junior high students need more support than the high schoolers traditionally. We try to plan monthly social activities, because, you know, we have students sitting at home in front of the screen, and we wanna get them involved with interacting with their peers and have those opportunities also. So, we'll plan, we have art monthly, we have monthly games and activity days, and then we try to have some field trips throughout the year.
Thank you. I don't see any number of students per teacher type of ratio.
So, for the high school, high school, it's forty to one, so they support all their classes. So, one student takes six to eight classes more, usually it's six to seven more typically, and that teacher supports that forty, those forty students taking their six classes.
Those forty students, is that it? There's, there's a cohort of just those forty students?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And how many teachers?
We have, let me count, we have four high school teachers, one junior high teacher, and two elementary teachers. Although next year, one teacher is gonna be half high school, half junior high, because our junior high is growing. We do have intervention opportunities, so we found one of the hardest subjects on, online is math. Not having that teacher every day to ask questions, get that support, is definitely math. So, we have math tutoring every day from twelve to one. Students can come in person from twelve to one. Students can come in person from twelve to one, or they can log in through Google Meet to meet with that math tutor every single day. And there is kids every day coming into math tutoring to get support. We do have study hall available every day, a supervised study hall with an instructional aide that's there to help the students from twelve thirty to three. And the teacher, they can always check in with the teachers too if they have specific questions. And one of the, I know, one of the nicest things about it is we also offer a hybrid program. So students can take one to two courses at their school residence. We find, the classes we advise and to, students typically take are foreign language courses. Same thing, being in person, having that in-person interaction. They'll take at the high schools a lot of times. Or those electives that we might not have in an independent study. Or they're just not as fun because they're on the computer versus like doing ceramics where you get to build something.
How many of the students in, in this cohort of forty are students with IEPs? And is there an age cutoff on how, you know, how old, do they age out? That's my question.
So when you have an IEP, they age out per se at twenty-two. And that would be the same across the whole school district, not just us.
Okay.
We typically have about twenty-five students with IEPs from kindergarten. We had our first kindergartner this year, up to 12th grade that have an IEP.
For your entire school enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's a little over twelve percent?
Uh, I think it would be like nine percent. We're running closer to like two hundred right now.
Thank you.
Yeah. No, I did the wrong math. Yeah, you're right. Sports, we do have an agreement with CIF and the two comprehensive sites with PV and Chico High that if the students are enrolled with us, they can participate in sports. So we have football players, lots of football players, cheerleaders, any, any sport they can do at the school of residence while they're enrolled with us. And then we also offer math acceleration for grades sixth through 12th grade. Where we find this is very unique is for our junior high population specifically. So we have students that come in, because in Chico Unified, you can't skip math levels. You can't go from like sixth grade math to eighth grade math because you're really good at math. You have to go in order. And so we'll have students do all of their sixth grade math in first semester and then all of their seventh grade math in second semester and so on. And so we'll get students that are, have gone through IM two by the end of their junior high. Or beyond. So just some data about our enrollments of students that choose to come to Oakbridge, maybe from another school site. So we have almost forty percent of our students are on UC track. So we continue that track to make sure they're eligible to go to those universities when they leave us. And this is over multiple years of data. So this is, you can see there was seven hundred and eighty responses of kids. That was not just this year, it was multiple years.
So if a student is not on UCCSU track, but all the courses are A through G courses, I mean, this number looks really concerning. Am I reading it wrong? Should we be very concerned? Do we know what is different about that forty-ish percent that is succeeding in this program that we can replicate or look at in terms of? And as a corollary question, how long do we let these sixty percent continue to try Oakdale before saying this is not a place where you're succeeding?
Let me clarify the, the information or where the data came from. This is when students enroll, request enrollment at Oakbridge. This is their profile when they start with us.
That does, that does help.
I could see why that was confusing, yeah.
I get it now.
Well, as a follow-up, do you have the data showing after they've been with you? Is, is there a change? Has there been growth? It does, you know, are we seeing swings from the forty, sixty split?
Like, does it change with this? I don't have that data, but I'm sure we could find it. I know we have some students that will like repeat a course to increase their grade, to get back on to, to get back onto track. Our counselor is amazing at reviewing those transcripts and, you know, finding students are like, oh, you're just like two classes off of getting back on track. Let's like try to fix this.
So I'm curious, for the forty percent that come to you on track for CSU or UC, ha- has there been any, has there been any data collected to what happens with our graduates after they graduate? Like, how are they doing? If, if, if they were wanting to go to UC or CSU or even to the, to Butte, like what is their success rate? Is there, is that data collected?
I don't know. I, I know at graduation, I'll announce like where the schools, some of the kids are going to universities and, but I don't have any data to provide to you today on that.
Yeah, I can help with the college question. The state does release college going rates. The data lags, I believe, two years. And we do look at that. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
Because the other question I'd like, Tim, when we have time, and I'm sorry to drag you into this, is, I mean, this just, it's not, there's not a lot of information here, just a big red block which is scary. I'd love to know how many of those sixty percent are on track maybe for other, you know, career readiness markers besides just, I mean, besides just the college path.
I can work with Rhonda to look at what some of those other markers might be.
Thank you. Sorry to hijack your presentation there.
It's okay. I know a lot of the people, kids in the sixty percent, you know, I have some, a couple going to the military this year. Quite a few go to Butte College. We run Reg to Go and get students connected with Butte College. Yeah, and some just go into the world of work also. And now to our littles, our kindergarten through fifth grade program. It's a grade level guided independent study. We use a printed, blend of printed and digital materials. We use Ready Reading Lexia, Ready Math, iReady Star, Studies Weekly for History and Science. Teachers meet weekly for an hour with parent and student. And during those team meetings, they review the work that the student's done for the week. And then they look at next week's worth, next week's work and what's expected. Those teachers also provide a lot of support to the parents, giving them some tools and strategies for working with their student at home. When the student is there, the teachers will often do assessments with the students to track their progress. They, we follow the same report card as the rest of Chico Unified. So at every trimester, the teachers are doing all the same assessments with their student to mark their progress. And I would say overall, our students keep up with the rest of Chico Unified. Okay. And same thing with our big kids. We offer art classes once a month for elementary specifically. They set up field trips and we have Mastermind Mondays. So in addition to the weekly meetings with the parent and the student, we have time on Mondays for, we have a kindergarten through second grade session where students will come in for two hours and they get to have like a class time. And they learn those skills of being in a class, walking down the hallway nicely. They'll do any ELA activities, math lessons, writing lessons a lot. Because writing is tricky for parents to teach. So that's something we do a lot on those Mastermind Mondays. And I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Mall.
So again, we kind of covered some of this in terms of your typical referrals to alternative education. We do have the online forums that the secondary counselors, we're closely with our counselors. They submit a referral form with different indicators as to what interventions have been, have been attempted. We already know that they've been basically through everything the other site can offer, but we have other indicators that we, we want to look at. At truancy letters, SARB referrals, any kind of counseling that's already been initiated, any outside counseling that's in place. All those are included on the referral forum. So when the student, when the referral gets kicked over to us, our counseling staff review it and then administration reviews it before each of our orientations. Fairview has the most orientations within the school year. It's basically at each of our units. So we take our four sessions, which are the quarters, and we break those into two units apiece. So at every unit, we hold an orientation for Fairview and Oakdale students who are referred to us. So it's a constant open door in referring students. What we are working closely with is what we're seeing with the block schedule and the move to online summer school from COVID. There's a bigger net in terms of credit recovery for students. So we are seeing a decline in, in enrollment and referrals to Fairview for what you would typically consider a typical Fairview referral, like credit deficiency. Now with the amount of credit students can earn at, with the block schedule, we're really looking at what is a typical Fairview referral. And so that's smaller classroom sizes. Truancy is a big one. Seen a lot of missing students from COVID. Just, you know, the students that are really just disconnected in general. And so we're working with Damon and Erica this summer to really look at, you know, what is a typical Fairview referral now? What can we provide that the other site, that the comprehensive sites cannot? And really that, for me, that comes down to smaller classroom sizes, more one-on-one support. And I'll get into that in a little bit in the next couple of slides. Like I said, AFC referrals are through SARB, truancy, or probation. Students get released from juvenile hall. They're typically requesting to come to alternative education. So if a student is connected to probation, maybe spend some time at Table Mountain, which is the juvenile hall school. Typically, probation would like to see them at the Academy for Change program. We'll hold an intake meeting and just kind of determine, you know, what's better. If we believe Fairview is a better, a better fit for the student, we'll welcome them at Fairview. If it is a junior high student, typically AFC is the right we'll take. And then work on credit recovery, some behavior modification, for lack of a better phrase, and to get them back to a comprehensive site. So yeah, so it's a pretty specific process with each, with each site in terms of how they refer over and everything that they've gone through to, to support the student. And then we have those case-by-case scenarios with students coming from out of the district or a student has gone through SARB, a, their attendance hasn't improved by the time they maybe got to the SARB hearing. Maybe we give them a shot at Fairview. And if they struggle with attendance still, then we look at coming back on the truancy contract and, and try and AFC. So our interventions include, but are certainly not limited to. So once a student steps foot on our campus, specifically at the beginning of the year and after every orientation, we pick the following Tuesday, second period. Every student takes the self-assessment, so the universal screener, if you will. Even if a student has already taken it and they've been with us, they take it again. So it basically asks specific questions on what they might be stressing with in life. Are they interested in individual counseling? Are they interested in any kind of groups that we already have established? And if not, if we see a trend in certain responses, our Sbit crew meets three times, three times a month. They review all of the information on these universal screeners. And they look at the data and they look at the interests and the needs and they develop groups according to what they see there. That doesn't take the place of the self-referrals that I'll get into as well. So short-term one-on-one counseling, that's a given with any of our counselors, whether you're an alphabetic counselor or a wellness counselor. Like I said, the groups, the counseling groups are based on the need and the interest. One of my favorites that a couple of our counselors, Lynn, got trained on this year, and something I've been talking about with some community agencies, a mindful-based substance abuse treatment. And it is an eight to ten-week program that is heavily incentive-based and I'm talking monetarily-based in, in hopes of a student actually becoming a part of the program. It's through a gentleman we met through the probation, through juvenile justice. We did have two successful cohorts ready at the beginning of the school year. We did lose one of our wellness counselors to another wonderful opportunity as a social worker through the Community Schools grant. But that's something that we're going to continue to look at. So we have referrals outside counseling and therapy for students with higher needs, specifically when it comes to summer. Any summer, any extended break, our, our Sbit crew is phenomenal at reaching out to families and making those community referrals for extended support throughout the, throughout those extended breaks. We do use our, our site funds to provide our wellness counselors access to students throughout the summer. So if they have a great connection with the student and they're still interested, we do use those site funds to continue counseling supports throughout the summer. And of course, during the winter and like November break and everything related to it. I can't stress enough about what our crew does all throughout campus for calls home to check in on students. Specifically, we have our, our rosters, the second period truancy rosters. So every teacher at Fairview is responsible for looking at their second period rosters, finding their truant students they haven't seen, send a personal message if they have the Google text, a voice or whatever it is, or just an email, hey, we missed your phase, come back to us. In addition to the home visits that are done every single week. One of our dream come true is through the Community Schools grant, through that application process. And I can't thank Michelle Blanch and Chase Volle and everyone that had a big, big part of securing that grant for our funds as we did by truancy then. And we're using site funds to, to hire a full-time targeted case manager to round up students in the morning, for lack of a better phrase. They've already hit, they've already hit the road. We're picking up students in the morning, taking them home. But we're also seeing that we have to establish a timeframe within that. So we will provide supports while we're picking you up, taking you home. We're going to teach you how to ride the beeline. We're going to continue to provide bus, bus passes and everything like that. So we got that going already. Our social worker comes on board from the Community Schools grant in, in August. And again, you ask about, do we have enough? It's just another opportunity. And like I said, there's a dream come true. And so the more we can get the connections, get them to school, the more we can connect them to the wonderful programs and the things our staff are doing. So yeah. Just some data in terms of referrals, self-referrals from our, so the QR code, it's pretty much universal on all our, on all our sites. And specifically with secondary, the QR codes are ever blasted everywhere, throughout the, throughout the school, in the classrooms, in the hallways, everywhere. So students just use the QR code. It brings up the form, it takes them about fifteen seconds to complete. And any member on the Sbit crew is right there, so they just click on it, what they, who they want to see, why. They get that notification immediately and the response time is, is pretty darn quick so long as they're on campus. So when they have the opportunity to get to the student, they get to the student. Teacher referrals, family referrals, I mean, we stress that at orientation, call us. You don't have to necessarily get on the website to make a referral to student counseling. Shoot us an email, shoot us a call, let us know. We'll submit the referral and get it going right away. Again, included but not limited to what you see up there. Again, I mentioned the mindful-based substance abuse treatment. As a counselor myself, that was a big one for me, is cessation groups. And so what we're starting to see is students want more individualized support when it comes to cessation services. And so we have all the qualifications, all the qualified people to provide all of that. But like I said, those assessments that our students take, the self-referrals, all of those really dictate what we offer in terms of group support, individual support, and our team, targeted case managers, wellness counselors. Everybody is really good at community partnerships. So with our multicultural nights, you know, the different programs that we offer on campus, but also trying to really get our, our families engaged. And our Spanish-speaking engagement nights have been, have been, have been increasing over the past couple of years. And it's pretty amazing. All right, this, like I said, about mirroring some of the things that are happening on other, other secondary sites, this is one of those examples. The wonderful part about being in AlTED is we get to really understand and come to know our students' stories because much smaller population. When we talk about the check-in, check-out process, that's happening regardless of the formalized process within EduClima. Teachers are just having conversations with students. The students that are showing up for the most part are, are being successful. It's the ones where the truancy is a massive hindrance. Those are the students that are really, really struggling, struggling and don't necessarily fit into the academically disengaged. They're really just disengaged in general. And so if you're not showing up, you can't get access to, to the direct line of work and communication. But I'll also talk about the universal grading system real quick. So what we saw, our students are very, very savvy, specifically at Fairview, is teachers get to know our students' stories. So there's a lot of empathy that comes with that. And so with that is giving the student every opportunity to turn and work. You know, I mean, oh, I know this is going on with this student. But we also started to see the students are accessing their curriculum, like through Google Classrooms and whatnot, when they're not coming to school. So we started to see a trend where students are passing classes, but their attendance is terrible. So how can we possibly be providing full So how can we possibly be providing full credits for a student who's got 70% attendance? So the universal grading system, the Fairview team came together last year and really dialed it in to where we close those little gaps where students can, can take advantage of that while also empathizing with their student struggles and what they're going through and to where they do have extended time to complete assignments, but also holding that line to where you can't just access full credits if you're not showing up every single day. Any questions there? All right. Just some, the EduClima data, like I said, the check-in, the formalized check-in, check-out process, you'll see some of the data there. But I just can't stress it enough that the individual conversations and one-on-one support that the students are getting from their teachers, not just at Fairview, but at AFC and Cal. I mean, it's more anecdotal than anything and it really is comes, comes down to starting to trust us, understanding that we do care. I mean, if we just met you or not, yeah. And the outcomes, of course, improved attendance, grades, credits, but also that ability to trust human beings in general for when they do leave us. If they go back to a comprehensive site, which is a slide coming up soon, all we want to do is for them to be successful wherever they want to go. And we want to feel good about it when they do leave us. I, there's, the, so the referral form, basically it could just come down to self-referrals and teacher referrals. Much smaller student population, but I said, our student, our teachers get to know our students, especially in the Village. That's what we call AFC and Cal. So those referrals come in daily. And I said, our Sbit team is just remarkable at getting to the students immediately and making those connections. All right. So Fairview specifically, when we talk about orientation, we show them a picture of a CUSD diploma and we just tell them, you know, we'd love for you to graduate with us, but ultimately it's up to you where you want to graduate from. And we're going to support wherever you want to graduate from. So if you come to us, make some positive changes, catch up on credits and you want to return, a lot of times that comes with a little bit of family pressure in terms of, hey, older brother, older sister, I graduated from Chico High or PV. So there's a little bit of pressure there, but we will support students going back to their comprehensive sites to graduate. Typically what we see is a student comes to us, they like the structure, they like the setup, they like the format of everything, so they typically stay. We do have a handful of students that do return to Chico High and PV typically in their senior year to graduate with the school that they originated from.
I was just looking at the MTSS interventions numbers. For 2324, you had 177 on the actual referral form, right?
Yes.
This year, so far, they have 226 on that form. Is the increase because the students and the staff are getting better at using the official process to get in? Why?
For, when it comes to the Village, the AFC Cal students, those referrals are typically more from staff. Students have access to it on their Chromebook, but what happens really is, hey, I would like to go talk to my counselor. They'll do it more verbally. The QR code for me, or for a lot of students, is more of a confidentiality thing versus asking for direct support. The Cal and AFC students tend to are very direct about, I want to go talk to somebody. But I will say, the intensity of behaviors is increasing every year. And so that's what I would attribute to the higher number from 177 to 226, without having the specifics on who submitted those referrals. Just being there, it's definitely probably more staff, staff referrals to the Sbit crew.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all the support.
So I have to quickly apologize to the board. So my, I just realized I had an epiphany when I was listening. So the circle that showed 60% of students not A through G track and then 40% were coming to us on A through G track. That was from our enrollment request form, which includes kindergarten through 12th grade. So the kindergarten through eighth grade would not, would not be on A through G track. So I will work with that slide. Thank you very much. I will work with Tim to get an updated graph for you guys. Thank you. Yeah.
I just hope that our school board today got to witness the dedication that our administrators have at their school sites and there's all their amazing staff. And so it's so difficult for students to fail. I, I believe students have to want to fail and on purpose for them to squeak by or get past us because the, these educators do an amazing job leading their teams to make sure that we try to connect with every single student. It's amazing. And if, if you haven't had a chance to spend time at Alt Ed, I highly recommend it. You get to see some very beautiful, amazing magic that they work over there. There was a question, sorry.
My question mark just went off again. I've got enough years in this district that I remember when our whole Alt Ed program was out where, what charter school was that on 12th? Yeah. And this was a dream. You know, for the staff and everyone that were working toward making it impossible, well, not impossible, but making it difficult for our students to fail. 20 years? We've spent getting here. It was, it was good years spent with the right end goal identified for what we wanted to do. I, I just, this is just so amazingly. I like it.
Yeah.
It, we've come a long way. But thank goodness.
I agree. There was a question from our school board with regards to keeping track of students once they graduate. I do want to let you all know that two weeks ago, Chico Unified School District went into contract with the California College Guidance Initiative, which is part of ED Code that we actually do go into contract. So we did. But what that pro or platform does is every single student, 12th grader, and actually begins during, it's going to also be affect our middle schools. But they start planning their college careers, if you will, and/or trade schools early on. And that includes all of California Juco's, junior colleges, of course, our state colleges and our universities. And so to include, what it will do is keep track of the students for up to four years. And so, and also we'll keep track of FAFSA's. As you do know, keeping track of FAFSA's is now part of ED Code as well and we'll be able to do that with that platform. So just wanted to throw that out there. And thank you all.
Thank you very much, both for the presentation and for the hard work that you guys do every day. Appreciate it. This is an informational-only item. There is no action from the board needed. Is there any comment from the public about the presentation we've just seen? Seeing none. I think I could use a break, but I also know that we have students who have been waiting very patiently. I thank you for that, to speak. So I'd love to get on to the next item on our calendar, which is an informational item regarding the results from the High School Athletic Sustainability and CIF survey results. So Mr. Calderon, welcome back. Long time no see.
It's been a while. I do. I get the, the privilege to be able to share information tonight about our athletics at the high school level. So I'm, I'm actually pretty excited to share this with you and I will be going over this with you. So the very first thing is how many of our girls and boys participate, participate in sports? So the way this reads is left to right. So if you look at Chico High, you're going to start reading it from left. Well, yeah, my left going right. So start with girls. In the 2324 school year, there was 500 participants that were girls, right? And then in 2425, 490. So it kind of dropped 10. But I mean, that's a huge number of female athletes. When you go to the boys, still Chico High, 554, and it increased to 590 for the 2425 school year. And then down below, you'll see PV High School in 2324. There are girls, there were 460 participants. And then that increased by 30 for the 2425 school year. And then our boys at PV, there was 594 in the 2324 school year. And then 2425 school year, that also increased up to 606. So what sports are they playing? So in this slide, and I'm going to start off with, it's very small to see, but hopefully on your Chromebooks, you'll be able to see the small little sentence down the bottom. Because you will see that small little sentence show up on multiple slides. And so for you and also our public that may have this, I want to know. It says, "The value is not shown for fewer than 13 respondents." So in this case, yes, there are other sports that our athletes participate in, but they're not going to show. And also if you don't see a number, there's fewer than 13 respondents in that one. But in this case, you will see, start with the left, again, with our female athletic participation, you'll see that track and field is pretty dominant. And then, and that's just Chico High and then PV's right next to it. You'll see that as well. So Chico High, 120 females, and then PV, 89. And that's for the 2324 school year. And of course, if you slide on over to the next column, you have 106 for Chico High and then 93 for PV. And then as you go down, you can see those numbers for that 23 comparison, the 2324 school year to the 2425. And then as you go to the right, you'll see the male participation for both Chico High and PV. You will definitely see where those high number of sports are with our young men. Football is big. And in fact, from 23 to 24, from the 2324 school year to the 2425 school year, you will see that both schools increased in football participation. So you see that program growing. Then you see track and field, it's pretty stable. For, and then as you go down, wrestling's pretty stable, baseball's pretty stable and so on and so forth. Those numbers are pretty similar. So the biggest growth you will see was football at both, at both schools. Any questions with regards to this slide? Okay. We're going to go on to the next one. So every year, we are going to be tasked with doing the California Interscholastic Federation Survey, otherwise known as the CIF survey. If you hear me say CIF, well, this is what I'm referring to. 810 students responded to this survey. 506 from Chico High and 301 from PV High School. And then you break it down, ninth-grade students, 392, 10th-grade students, 184, and then 11th-grade students, 234. Your questions are going to be, hey, why didn't eighth grades, eighth-grade students take it? And the response to that is, this is a California Interscholastic Federation Survey, so it pertains only to high school students. And then your next question would be, hey, why are the seniors not taking it? Well, because there's questions here with regards to what is it that they're like to see at their school site and they are on their way out. So therefore, you focus on these three grades because these are the grades that are being affected by it. And so that's that part. Next slide. Okay. I want to make sure that everybody's on the same page because if you look at this, you're going to notice that the percentages do not add up to the numbers. Let's take, and so this is me front-loading how to read this slide. So let's take volleyball and let's look at Chico High and you are going to notice 14.37. And you go, wait a minute, that's 23 out of 100? That does not equal 23%, right? That should be, say, 23%, but it doesn't. It says 14.37. So the reason that is, okay, is in certain slides that you are going to see where the percentages do not add up with those numbers. This is the reason why. The 14.37 is with regards to the responses. So the choice, there's multiple responses. A student can choose multiple choices here. And the bottom number that you'll see in this case, it's the amount of respondents. So how many students actually took that or answered that question? So I want to make sure that's clear with everyone. What are your questions before I start diving into this? All right. Okay, here we go. All right, so volleyball. In basketball, field hockey, you start seeing these and it says, from, starting from left to right, these are females from Chico High and PV play the following sports outside of the school. These are all the sports that they play. Some pretty cool ones. You'll see martial arts. You see, way down there, you'll see lacrosse. You'll see rugby. You see gymnastics and then track and field. So these are, once again, sports that our students play outside of school. On the male side, you'll see some of them play soccer and these, of course, are all club teams. Baseball, lacrosse, martial arts, golf, wrestling, boxing. I was kind of like, wow, let's bring back boxing. No, no, not a good idea. Football, swimming, volleyball, rugby, mountain biking. So and of course, there's mountain biking going on around Chico all the time. It's a great place to mountain bike. So I can see that as being of interest. Next slide. Here, you will notice that the number of respondents does line up with the percentages and that is because they only chose one, right? So from here, females from Chico High and PV would like to try the following sports. That means they're currently not playing these sports, but they would like to try these sports. And you will see that up there, you'll see volleyball, track and field, tennis. And then once again, reading from left to right, I'll, I'll always be reading from left to right. It's just easier for me. So skiing, snowboarding, cheerleading, field hockey, basketball, so on and so forth. And then that was just strictly PV and then you see Chico High. And what you will notice is Chico High and PV, they start to mirror each other, right? Which is kind of interesting. Now, you go to the male side, right, on the right. Males from Chico High and PV would like to try the following sports. Once again, track and field is huge. Basketball is huge. Golf is huge. And same thing for Chico High as we roll down. Now, at this point, you're going to say, hey, what about these other sports that we see in these other slides? Because I'm sure the school board members have already looked ahead. And so what I do want to stress with the public and our school board is that these sports are currently offered in our high schools. And that is, all they are is sports that are currently offered in our high schools. Any questions with regards to this slide? Okay. Thank you. We'll go to the next one. Same thing as two slides before. The top numbers, taking that, that first bar, which is track and field on the left-hand side. The total number of responses is the percentage, right? And then below is the total number of respondents or responders, if you will. So females from Chico High and PV will like to continue playing the following sports. That means they play the sports and they want to continue playing these sports. And so let's take Chico High in this instance and then we'll look at PV right next to it. Track and field is huge. Just so you know, there's always over. Like, I mean, track and field is probably one of the biggest programs that we have out there. Next, the football, of course. I mean, track and field is probably one of the biggest programs that we have out there. Next, the football, of course, uh, which you can tell on the right-hand side, that sticks out substantially, uh, when you look at the males. Um, so you'll see that, all the, the, the sports that they would like to continue playing. Any questions with regards to this one? Okay. Next slide. In this slide, you'll see students not currently participating in a sport at Chico High and PV are generally interested in participating in the future. So in the first one, you'll say, yes, uh, yeah, they want to participate in a sport in the future. The second, uh, row, if you will, it says maybe, you know, those are like in-betweeners. Yeah, I'm thinking about it, I don't know if I'm gonna do it or not. Then you have the noes. Um, which were like, yeah, I'm definitely not playing sports in the future. But you do have some numbers up there that say yes, and then of course, you look at the maybes. Um, if you, uh, were to look at, uh, PVs, which is the top ones that say yes, if you look at that one, you could see, okay, you add up the boys and the girls, so now you can say, okay, there's, uh, thirty-five students there that, yeah, they're interested in playing sports next year that they haven't played before. Okay, good, let's get them going. Um, any questions with regards to this slide? All right. Next one. In this slide, we are gauging what the experience was, uh, for the participants that played sports or did athletics at both high schools. And, um, what sticks out, um, it's pretty evident, is that students overall had a very positive experience playing sports at both high schools. Um, there are some neutrals there, but I mean, when, when you see those bars at the top end, uh, from the majority of the respondents, that is pretty impressive. And if you look at the negative, well, look at that little bar down there that says, or, or that sentence down there, "Value's not shown for fewer than six respondents." So, um, you can kinda notice that compared, uh, okay, so six and six down there in the bottom, if you're looking at that bottom row for the female section, it's like, okay, there's, uh, um, it's fewer than that, so. Just wanna share that with you, because to me, that's, that's positive, our, our sports are having a very positive effect with our students. All right, next slide. I wanna be very clear with this one, because thi- this one and the next slide are kinda similar. But, uh, to understand them is, is very important. So if I do not do a good job, I need you to hold me accountable and ask me to explain it again. So in this slide, um, these are the number of students, females and males, who do, who currently do not play sports at the high school, who would like to play the following sports that are currently not offered. Okay, so these sports here are not offered at the high schools. And your question should be, it's like, okay, why'd you choose these sports that are on here as the list, right? And so my response to that is because these sports are the sports that are offered within the CIF. So that is why these are there. Because if you're gonna add a sport at a high school, possibly, thinking about it, well, however we go, you gotta make sure that they are, you have someone to play against. And the only play persons or teams to play against are gonna be within your CIF sections. So just wanna let you know about that. So, uh, once again, these are students who do not play sports. But man, if they offered this sport, they would totally be into it. So that top one, uh, females, uh, huge, um, thirty-four point three pers- uh, thirty-five percent response, responses were there, because once again, they could've chosen multiple. But forty-five out of eighty-four, the females said badminton was one of their top choices. Um, and then down to beach volleyball is a top choice, and then followed by flag football. If you look at the right-hand column, you're gonna look at Chico High and PV, once again, badminton. Uh, there was, uh, uh, thirty-seven students that said, males, that at Chico High said, I would love to play badminton. And then if you look at PV, you'll see twenty-two. Now, if you add those together, because it's one single sport, and say, uh, that's a, that's a substantial amount of students with interest in badminton. Then, uh, below, uh, the badminton section, you will see on the boys' side lacrosse, which also stands out there. Uh, fifteen out of fifty-one respondents said, and this is Chico High, said, yeah, uh, I would play lacrosse if it was offered. And then at PV said, fourteen out of thirty-one respondents said, yeah, I would play lacrosse if it was offered. So just wanna throw that out there. Are there any questions with regards to this slide? Yes.
Sorry. You said that, that there were PV girls and boys that said they would play lacrosse?
No, no. I said that, uh, the numbers with badminton.
Got it.
Are PV and Chico High, if you look at them, is, is like, y- those two together pretty substantial group of students that are interested in playing badminton.
Beach volleyball?
Yep.
Is that for both schools?
Yeah, that's for both schools, but it's for female sports, yeah. Maybe one of your questions maybe is like, hey, wait a minute here, what about lacrosse for females? Why is that not, it's because it's not currently offered within the CIF.
Oh.
Yeah.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah. But that doesn't stop girls from playing on a potential boys' team, any of these teams, boys' teams in the future. So just wanna make sure that that's clear.
That was the part I missed, was.
Okay. Any other questions?
Is that the reason, um, males aren't represented for beach volleyball as well?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, beach volleyball is not a, uh, male sport within the CIF. Great questions. Okay, next one. Okay. Much like the slide before, this one is the complete opposite. This is with regards to our students that currently play sports or are involved in athletics at both schools. So these students say, hey, listen, I already play these sports, I'm, I'm already involved in athletics. That being said, if these sports were offered at the high schools, I would definitely be playing these sports. So, uh, starting with the females, you will see beach volleyball, that's big, and it's up there. Um, you know, so it's like sixty-four out of a hundred and fifteen students, female students, said beach volleyball is their, their interest, they would love to do that. That was just Chico High. Uh, PV was thirty-eight out of eighty-one. Flag football, um, that is something that's, uh, gaining a lot of momentum within California and CIF. Um, so, you know, it's, it's, just throwing that out there, it, it is gaining momentum. So sixty-one out of a hundred and fifteen females at Chico High said, yeah, this is kinda cool. I'd definitely play that. Um, and then, uh, PV has thirty-nine out of eighty-one. So, and so on and so forth. Then you see badminton down there, fifty-nine out of a hundred and fifteen, and then so on and so forth. When you look at the male side, uh, what does stand out there is that top bar, you'll see lacrosse. So fifty-five out of the eighty-seven students that play athletics said, hey, listen, if there was lacrosse, I would definitely be interested in playing that sport. Um, and at PV, it's fifty-five out of sixty-two. Um, and so then followed by badminton and water polo. What are your questions with regards to this slide? Okay. No questions? Okay, next one. Here's where we get to celebrate, because this is pretty cool, I think. So here, what you have are all the league and section titles, uh, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. And as you can tell, uh, Chico High and Pleasant Valley are pretty even in terms of how they compete within section and the league. And it's impressive what our teams do, uh, within, well, within the CIF. I do want to say that for PV, um, because of the time that this came out, there were added, uh, there, there was actually league champions, and, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention this, because I, I did tell, uh, Pam Jackson that I would share that the PV Boys Golf Team won league. Um, so kudos to them. And then also, um, there's awards for coaches. I thought that was fantastic. So I will mention that Beth Burton and Dave Crawford were named Section Model Coach Award winners, both of them from PV, so I did wanna share that. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And on that same note, a big shout out to all of the, uh, coaches, staff, and the student athletes, of course, who fuel all that success. It's hard work on everybody's part, and it's really exciting when it, uh, when it shows up like this. That said, I know we just let him sit down. Anybody have any more questions regarding the presentation? In that case, um, do we have any public comment? I suspect that we do, in fact, I know that we do. So, um, I see a lot of you out there, and I'm super grateful that you came and that you stayed. I know it's been a lot of waiting, so thank you for your patience. Maybe you've all decided suddenly that you wanna pursue a career in alternate, alternative education now. If you let us do that, it'd be amazing. We'd love to have you. Um, that said, we have four people who signed up with, uh, cards to speak. We are gonna set aside a full thirty minutes, so if we have, uh, more speakers after that, we'll, um, we have five total signed up. Oh, we do, look at that, I know how to count too, guys, I promise. Um, but we'll set aside the full thirty minutes, um, so that if more people feel compelled to speak on this topic, they have time to do that. That said, if you're new at speaking at board meetings, um, you have, uh, three minutes. There is a beautiful clock back there. Uh, we will let you know with a sound when you are at thirty seconds, uh, remaining in your time to speak. Um, that said, uh, our first listed speaker is a student, Oliver Brown. We'd love to hear from you.
My name is Oliver Brown, and I'm a sophomore at Chico High with a four point two nine GPA. I'm in the engineering pathway, heavily involved in the robotics and rocketry clubs, and I've played lacrosse year-round in seventh grade. I play locally with the Chico Rebels and nationally with the Sacramento Aces twenty-twenty-seven Elite Team. Because Chico High doesn't have a CIF lacrosse program, the Rebels are forced to travel as far as San Luis Obispo and Medford, Oregon, just to find games. Meanwhile, schools Chico High already competes against in other sports, like Nevada Union, Lincoln, Wood Creek, and Roseville, already have their own CIF lacrosse teams, while we remain left out. I plan to play college lacrosse and pursue a degree in mechanical engineering after graduating from Chico High. But as things currently stand, my school never recognized me as an athlete. I can't justify buying a Chico High duffel bag. I will never wear my school's name on my jersey or be acknowledged as a scholar athlete at graduation. Despite paying lacrosse at a national lever, level, maintaining over a four-point-oh GPA, taking honors and AP classes, and staying in, a- active in clubs, my efforts in both academics and athletics go unseen simply because my sport isn't recognized here. I would never ask for an easier path, as success requires hard work. However, I do ask for the same opportunities as my peers. Our community has a forty-year history of college lacrosse and twenty-four years of youth in high school lacrosse. With over hundreds of local supporters ready to contribute their time, effort, and money to CIF lacrosse, I simply ask for the chance to play for my school, um, like my peers, and create more opportunities for others in our community to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have Leonard Jones?
Good evening, board. Thank you for your time. I'd like to take a couple minutes. My name's Leonard Jones. Um, I'm here to talk about my son, Ethan Jones. Uh, he graduated, um, in the class of twenty-three. Uh, he did start playing lacrosse when he was ten years old with the Chico Rebels. Um, since that time, uh, when he got into high school, obviously, there wasn't a program available, so we did have to travel down to Sacramento, where he was on a national travel team and was able to compete all over the United States. Um, once he graduated, he actually received an athletic scholarship to play at Dominican University for lacrosse, uh, which was kinda surprising, because most kids don't have an opportunity to get a scholarship unless they play in high school. So he was kind of the exception. Uh, since that time, um, he has the, uh, uh, been able to try out for the Hong Kong National Lacrosse Team. We were just in Hong Kong a few weeks ago to compete in a, um, Asian Open Championships. Um, he will be competing in Berlin, Germany in July, also another tournament in Tokyo, Japan. And he has an opportunity to play in the U-twenty World Championships in South Korea at the, in mid-August. All of this started with the Chico Rebels. And I gotta say, uh, and it was interesting listening to the surveys and all the sports that kids would be interested in. But if you really look at, I think a question should be posed is, if you had a sport that gave you the best chance to play in college, would you be interested in that sport? And that sport's lacrosse. There's no other sport that gives a higher percentage that kids go on to play in college than lacrosse. It's one out of seven. And it's an equal opportunity sport, both girls and boys play. There's over ten thousand girls and ten thousand boys in the state of California that play lacrosse. Uh, you look at field hockey, there's probably six thousand five hundred girls that go on to college to play. Lacrosse almost doubles that for girls, so. Um, and it's actually going to be brought back as an Olympic sport, um, after a hundred years. So it will be a sport in the LA Olympics. So it's gaining in popularity, it's here to stay. Um, we would love for the CIF to be a part of that program, and, um, appreciate your time, so thank you.
Thank you. And for the next speaker, forgive me, please, if I must pronounce your last name, Nick Svarzo.
Thank you. My name is Nick Svarzo. Thank you for hearing myself and others express support for bringing lacrosse into the high schools. I am a teacher at Marsh Junior High School. I teach English and ELD and have for nine years now. I've been a coach for the Rebels for the last ten years. I'm here to vocalize my support for adopting lacrosse as a CIF sport. Lacrosse is an incredible sport that has given athletic opportunities to athletes around the country. It is also a distinctly American sport, Native American to be clear, with deep cultural ties to various native communities. My goal as a former player and coach is very simple. I want to grow the game of lacrosse. I want as many kids playing the sport as possible. I feel like I have a unique viewpoint on this matter, as I've seen the landscape of lacrosse in California shift dramatically, from witnessing and being a part of the explosive growth in the Bay Area in the early two thousands to seeing its decline in the North State. I grew up in the Bay Area during a time in which only a few select private schools had lacrosse teams. When I was in middle school, posters were hung promoting a new sport that my future high school, Sarah, was planning to adopt, lacrosse. The poster said, "Sign up for the Coyotes Lacrosse Club to get prepared to play for your high school." I was excited. I had the chance to play a new sport and be one of the first players ever to play lacrosse for my high school. I signed up for the club, learned the sport, and when I went to high school, I had a very successful career. This propelled me to play lacrosse for Chico State and find a passion for coaching and teaching what is now my career. During that time in two thousand and five, only a few handful of high schools in the Bay Area had lacrosse. Now, nearly every high school team has a team, high school has a team. The sport has grown rapidly. During that time, club teams like Coyotes, the Vipers, the Red Hawks existed, but I never would have played had it not gone to my high school. Kids want to play for their school, they wanna see their jersey. Now, Chico's not the Bay Area. We don't have dozens and dozens of schools surrounding us, but the same spread has been occurring in our nearest big city, Sacramento. A lot of the club programs that existed when I began coaching are now CIF. Wood Creek, Grass Valley, Roseville, Folsom, and there's more to be named. Lacrosse is spreading in Sacramento too, but without action, that spread will stop. When Club Lacrosse was the structure, Chico was a dominant program. The Rebels have won state titles, sent kids to college on full and partial scholarships. And let me just say, Leonard, I'm very happy that Ethan's doing so well. Excellent kid. But now sadly, we are behind many of the programs who have gone CIF. The Rebels are on, one of only four high school club lacrosse teams left in the state. And with a record of ten and one, we are showing that Chico is still a strong lacrosse city. However, the model needs to be changed. However, the model needs to be changed. Lacrosse has spread rapidly in the Bay Area and Southern California, but how can that growth continue? With bold action. I want lacrosse everywhere in our community. I want these opportunities for our players, but that cannot happen without lacrosse going CIF. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker with a listed card is Hogan Brown.
Thank you. My name is Hogan Brown and I'm director of the nonprofit Friends of Chico Lacrosse, an organization working for the last two years with Chico Unified in our community to bring lacrosse to our local high schools. The broader issue is that we need more athletic opportunities at the high school level. Chico High and PV are consistently competing for league and section titles and are among the top athletic programs in the North Section. Last year, our schools competed against forty-five percent of their major sports contests were games against San Joaquin section teams. This is obviously in search of stronger competition to pursue state, state titles in major sports. Compared to our most recent thirteen Sac Joaquin section teams, the teams we play the most at Chico and PV, we are thirteen percent larger student bodies, but we offer twelve percent fewer sports. We offer four percent fewer varsity sports than our thirteen most common opponents. We offer four, eighteen percent fewer JV sports and twenty-five percent fewer freshman sports. We need more no-cut sports. Football, track, wrestling, as you saw from the survey, are bursting at the seams and growing each year. Lacrosse, a spring no-cut sport with JV and varsity teams each of thirty-five to forty-five players, offers an inclusive model. In contrast to cut sports like basketball, volleyball, and baseball, these exclude late starters. For example, conservatively, we have eight eighth-grade basketball teams that feed into just two fifteen-player freshman teams. In theory, cutting seventy-five percent of the players who played the year before. As a father and an educator, I believe we choose our hard. It's hard being a coach, a parent, or a student, and no one hard, no one understands hard better than the lacrosse community. They get the last pick of fields, have never been recognized as athletes by their schools, or warn their schools' names across their chest. Bringing CIF lacrosse to Chico High and PV will be hard, but so is telling a freshman there's no room on the bus, or watching kids cut from teams for lack of space or funding. Hardest of all is seeing students drift through high school without purpose. The phrase "disengaged" was used for about the last hour and a half, and sports engage students. We have coaches, we have open invitations to Sac Joaquin section leagues, we are fully funded by national, state, and local organizations, and we have the support of the community. I ask you, choose the hard that gives more kids a place to belong. Thank you.
Next speaker is Brian Keogh.
Yeah, hi. My name's Brian Keogh. Uh, I have a long history of, this is just too short. I have a long history of lacrosse in this community. I moved here in the early eighties and started the Chico State team, which is still going strong forty years later. Um, in two thousand and two, I started the Chico Rebels program. And, uh, that's had its ups and downs, uh, but it's still going strong, and that's twenty-something years later. Uh, it's a dream to have, uh, this as a sanctioned CIF sport in the, in the schools here. It's just been a long time coming, and it's overdue. And, I mean, badminton's fun, but, uh, if we're talking about adding a sport that's going to enhance the lives of kids and give them a future to go to college and play a sport, it's a great sport. It's a great sport. It's, it has a rich history and a deep culture that's all-American. It's steeped in honor and respect. The players shake hands before the game, they shake hands after the game. We honor the game, we honor our opponent. It, it belongs in the schools. Uh, it's long overdue. I don't know why it hasn't been added as a CIF sport. In two thousand and five, the CIF sanctioned it as a varsity sport in schools, and that's twenty years ago. So what are we doing? Let's get it on board. I, I don't know what it's going to take. I've been waiting a long time. And it's long overdue. There's a lot of kids that could really benefit for it. I'm not going to extol the virtues of youth sports. You all know how great youth sports are. This is a unique sport, it's a unique opportunity for kids to do something that's, that's difficult, to be a part of something that's bigger than themselves, to get them off the damn screens, and, uh, you need to do this. You really do. It's, it's long overdue. So thanks for your time, thanks for listening to these guys, and, uh, um, I just hope that, uh, you make a good decision on this at some point when the time comes. Uh, I realize tonight is not an actionable item, but hopefully it will be. And just please, 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 consider lacrosse. Please add it. It, it, you'll see, you'll see. You'll do the right thing, I know you will.
Thank you. That was the last of our speakers who submitted cards ahead of time. However, if anyone else wants to speak on this topic, um, the microphone is right there. If there are no others, I'd just like to say thank you all again very much. You make some really great and cogent arguments, and seeing you guys come out and participate like this on a school night especially, um, we love it. Thank you very much for being here. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I, I have a question. Part of the problem seems to be that because of the lack of the CIF sanctioning for the schools in our league area, what does it take to become CIF?
Just to clarify, is the question, can Chico Unified, um, lacrosse be sanctioned by the CIF?
What does it take? Yeah, I guess the, the, the question is, if we have interest, um, what does CIF consider when they talk about sanction, or you know, authorizing it?
Yeah, so CIF has already sanctioned lacrosse across the state. It's really up to individual districts to decide if they want to offer the already sanctioned CIF sport. So lacrosse has already been sanctioned by the CIF, so it's really up to districts to decide if they want to offer the, the sport, um, in, you know, in their own district.
It sounded as though part of the problem for us, Chico Unified, is, um, teams to compete with that are CIF. Is it true that most of the CIF lacrosse are quite a ways away?
There are relatively, um, close current CIF sanctioned high school lacrosse programs. A few were mentioned, um, by one of our speakers earlier. Um, it's, for example, somewhere in the, the, um, Lincoln, Rockland, Roseville areas, very similar distance to, to the Reading schools that we play in our league.
If you could put a list together of, say, within the hundred and fifty miles radius is about what we do with Lassen and Shasta and, and those, to see, so that, as a board member, I'd like to see what would be available out there to compete with, if that's possible to put it together.
There's about, uh, over a hundred schools within about a hundred and fifty miles. And as a community club, you can't play the CIF, so that's why we're traveling all over to play other clubs, but there's a lot more local Sacramento teams that we can play against if we were allowed to be a CIF high school team.
Okay. Thank you.
So, but it's only males, it's only a male team that is CIF, right?
It's technically, they, um, females can play on the male teams. For, technically, yeah.
So, as I was noticing on the slides, we already have a, there, there is a disparity between the number of female athletes and the number of male athletes. And how, how would this, how, how does it impact Title IX? If there's, so if there was a lacrosse team, it would be considered a male sport?
My understanding is yes, it would be considered a male sport. For Title IX compliance, it, the fundamental aspect of that is significant disproportionality. The key is significant. So we've been through, was it two thousand and twelve? It's been a while, but we have, um, we've been through an audit, and so far, we are not significantly disproportionate. We have a compliance component every year, so that's where we are with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Please.
Are there any girls currently on the Rebels team?
Yeah, uh, I'm the head coach of the youth team. Uh, we currently have a girl on our team, but there's no female teams up here, so she's playing with the boys, and she's loving it.
And do you know, it's fairly common among the, like, the Sacramento-area teams to have, uh, girls on the teams as well?
So there is girls CIF lacrosse.
Okay.
And every school that we're talking about playing lacrosse has girls teams. In schools that don't have enough girls to field a male team, or, excuse me, a female team, those girls compete on the male.
Makes sense. Okay. Thank you.
But there's a girls CIF sport in all the schools.
Okay. Thank you. Sounds like there's an interest here in maybe doing some more research and gathering some more data, and I know that you guys have been pushing for this for a while, and I appreciate how, your persistence. I mean, it pays off, right? For real. It's, it's, it's great to see, um, people who want something and they keep, and they keep aiming for it. That's, that's what we need. Um, that said, as some, one of the speakers mentioned, this is an informational action, informational item only, so we're not going to take any action tonight, but I do again want to thank you all for coming out and making your voices heard. Thank you very much. Just let, suffice to say, it is definitely on our radar, you've definitely done your job in that way, and conversations are continuing internally about what that might look like, all right? So thank you, guys. Um, at this point, um, we might take a little five-minute stretch break. Some of us up here need to move, and we'll give you guys time to, you know, head out and do what you need to do with the rest of your evening. Again, thank you very much for, for coming, you guys, appreciate it. Appreciate it. And a thank you to everyone who is still here. I know a lot of you are here for the charter school talk. It's been a long meeting and I appreciate you're all still here. Don't mean to put you out this late. That said, we are on to item 1012, which is our annual report on our spring charter visits. Mr. Fuentes, please.
Good evening. So every spring Chico Unified visits each of our charters that we authorize. I had the honor of visiting with each of them over April and May, and it is a super fun task to get out to the sites and see ahead of time. They get a set of questions that they respond to. This kind of the foundation for our discussions. And it is interesting and collaborative and was a great experience to learn the different approaches and instructional strategies that each of our charters are putting into place. And we do this every year. In the report, there is the more formalized responses and a review of kind of our conversations as well. So I have, some of the charters are here this evening also. And if you have any questions, ask away.
After all the other presentations, that was, are you sure there's not a 30-minute PowerPoint? Because I'll watch one. That said, do we have any questions? I know we've all reviewed.
I just, okay. The work you do to put those summaries and reviews together is wonderful. And I just wanted to express appreciation from this board member to how much you are able to give us a picture of, you know, the overall, what's happening with our, our authorized charters. I just want to let you know, I do appreciate all the work and the charter staff too, because they provide, they provide the information for you, for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chico often feels almost unique in the way that our charters and our district work together with an eye on, you know, student achievement across multiple different modalities. And I really appreciate that. And if there is more that we can do to support the charters, we would, you know, we continue to be excited to hear from all of our charter school partners. So thank you very much for that. Do we have any other questions? We're just going to sit here and pat each other on the back, which we can certainly do. I mean, we're almost done with the school year. It feels like we need it, right? Like we're getting there, you guys.
I'm the next item also, so.
Yeah. Okay. If there really isn't any more discussion on this, wow, then please, let's just move on to a slightly less backpatty topic here. Take it away.
All right. So this is a resolution accepting the surrender of the Charter of Achieve Charter School of Chico. The governing board of Achieve Charter has resolved to cease operations and surrender its charter effective at the end of the 2425 school year. Chico Unified had authorized them through June 30th of 2027. And so their board aim is to provide timely notice to the students, parents, and staff to ensure the orderly transition and proper handling of student records. So the board as authorizer is asked to approve and adopt the attached resolution accepting CUSD's surrender of the charter. And then moving forward, we'll put it through to CDE. I have Steve Wright and Casey Taylor from Achieve, and they just wanted to speak real briefly.
Hello, everybody. Just wanted to say, I think most of you know, and we've been working with the Chico Unified staff, that we are consolidating our charters in Paradise in Chico and will be authorized by Butte County Office of Ed with just one charter. And so this is part of the process. We need to surrender them with all of our authorizers. But we have felt so much gratitude actually to this board and the staff at Chico Unified for giving our families and students and staff a soft place to land after the fire and a place to really heal and thrive and build a lot of capacity that is in turn supporting our return back to Paradise and our work rebuilding that community too. And so we're just so grateful for all that you guys have done for us over the years and plan to continue the really good relationships that we have with the Chico Unified staff as we continue to serve students in Chico, just being authorized by BCOE.
Yeah, thank you, board and Chico Unified staff. Like your support over the years has been great. I just wanted to say, one of the things we talked about is how can we make sure we take steps to continue that good working relationship? So Achieve Chico is not going anywhere. We still have Achieve Chico campus, same location, same students, everything. And we want to make sure that we just continue to be a collaborative part of the Chico, the greater like Chico educational community, like Corbute is also, you know, huge part of Chico community, but not a part of Chico Unified. So we still want to be here in Chico and work with everybody here. So thank you. Thank you, staff, for all the support over the last few years. Really amazing, especially as we were landing after the campfire. And now I know for like myself and many of our students, we just feel like super proud Chico citizens, not really so much like refugees anymore. So thank you.
It has been a wild ride. We've been happy to have you. Thank you very much, you guys. Appreciate it.
I have one question, I guess. So that transition will happen in 2027. How does that affect like the measure money being delegated in the meantime?
So Achieve will still participate with the Measure C charter money? Yeah. That the authorization of the charter school is not impacted, does not impact the Measure C dollars, bond dollars?
Do we have any other questions from the board for staff? It's a good one. Do we have any public comment on this item since it is an action item? In that case, we are discussing formally a resolution 1687-25. Do we have a motion associated with this resolution?
I motion to approve 168725.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion by Hayes and a second by Robinson. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. All right. And I realize that I didn't actually give chance for public input on the previous item. Are there any other members of our community out here who wish to speak about anything regarding the state of the charters in, in Chico? I just don't, I hate skipping steps. I'm sorry that I did. Okay, we'll call that done then. Well, thank you guys so much for being here. I really appreciate it. Hope you all have a wonderful evening. But we are going to head on into item 10.2.1, which is a look at our 2025 summer projects.
Hi, everybody. So I'm here to go over our summer project list for this summer. We, it's a little different scope this year. We spent a lot of money last year on the roofing project over at Chico High that, thank goodness, is finished and, and going well. The list that we have in front of you here is basically for beautification of a lot of our campuses. There are a couple of items on there that we are waiting for bids on, which is a roofing project for Emma Wilson and a roofing project for PV, the M, the Michigan wing. So we are still waiting on, on quotes for those. But most of the other stuff that you see there will be, a lot of it be done in-house. So that is a nice, nice thing to have and looking, really excited to get started to work on beautification of all the campuses.
There goes my question mark again. Sorry. You mentioned that you were waiting for bids, but what we have here does not represent a bid that we're waiting on.
Sorry, that would be a quote. For the, so those are estimates for the, for the roofing projects that PV and Emma Wilson.
So for clarification, the roofing projects are at the very, very bottom?
Very, very bottom, yes.
Under the yellow section?
Under the yellow section.
You're hiding them from me.
So the values that are in those two, for those two schools, Emma Wilson and Pleasant Valley High School, those are estimates?
Estimates.
And Joe's waiting on, on the quotes?
Yep.
Okay. Next question. During the summer, especially with as many in-house projects that you have listed, do you have a problem with staff availability because of the scheduling of vacations during that period of time for our 12-month employees?
We, we really, we don't, we rarely run into that because the way I set the schedules is we're, we're off on different times. A lot of the times, we take a lot of our time off during, during the years, during the year, and then during the summertime, we, we offset it by making sure that we have staff available all summer long.
Is there a cost difference? If you have to use a limited term or substitute employee because one of your 12-month permanent employees is not available, how does that affect what the cost of this project?
That would be a good question. As far as like when we have our subs?
Right.
Is that what you're asking? If we have a sub that's subbing in? Okay.
So largely the expense here is really related to supplies and materials for the in-house. Because the labor is essentially a fixed cost. So if someone's out on vacation, yes, we will hire a sub to replace them. The cost is minimal on that. They, all subs are at step one of the position that they sub for. And really the values here are the materials and supplies to get the said project completed.
That makes sense. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Let's, this is a, sorry, guys, I skipped a groove there. This is a discussion action item. Are there any other questions for Mr. Morris or for the rest of staff? Do we have any public comment regarding this item? All right, in that case, the action on the table then would be to approve all of these summer projects as listed here. Anybody want to make a motion in that regard?
I will make a motion to approve the summer projects.
All right.
A second.
All right, a motion by Member Olson and a second by Vice President Conken. Any debate on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. It is unanimous. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we're going to jump on to item 1022, which is a look at Measure C Charter School projects and their applications therefore.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here this evening. The first item we have in front of you tonight is the first application round for the Measure C 65% Charter School project applications. Applications were due on May 2nd and we received three impressive applications. Blue Oak Charter School, Inspire School of Arts and Sciences, and Sherwood Montessori School. And those applications were included in your board agenda. All three applications have been scored and Blue Oak had some areas that we were hoping to ask them to elaborate more on for the next deadline. Some of those things are a breakdown of
I'm sorry, Julie, could you get just a little tiny bit closer to the mic and move closer to you, one of the two? Thank you.
Sorry about that. On the secured leveraged funding portion of their application, we would like to see more information on a breakdown of the funding that they plan to use. They mention Measure K and Measure C, their ADA dollars that they're getting. And they mentioned Proposition 2 and a loan, but there's no information about how much each one of those funds is going to contribute to the project. And we'd also like to see an overall cost estimate on the construction costs. Additionally, we'd like to give them another opportunity to answer number five, which was the impact on district students. So in, in our minds, that was district-wide. So how, how does building their school affect district-wide? You know, the students and the community? And their focus was primarily on Blue Oak. So we would like to give them another opportunity to address a couple of those items, as well as a description of the project. as a description of the project. How many classrooms are they planning to build? So I think they just need to just give us a little bit more information. So we plan to provide those notes to them and ask them to resubmit on July 31st, which is the next application deadline. Moving on from there, we have the application from Inspire School of Arts and Sciences. We also scored Inspire's application. Out of 100 points, they scored a 97. Their application is very thorough, but I'm not surprised that it's very thorough because they have a shovel-ready project. They've been working hard. We've all been working hard on their project for a number of years. So tonight, we are recommending funding of their application. The next application came from Sherwood Montessori School. And we're also asking that Sherwood provide a bit more information on their application. Sorry, there's so many documents here. Primarily, it is the likelihood of them receiving Proposition 2 funds, which I know is difficult for them to answer because the state isn't yet done with creating all of the criteria and how the Prop 2 Charter School funds are going to be rolled out. So we want to take a little bit of a wait and see. They are working with a consultant, get some information from the consultant on the likelihood of them receiving those funds. So the recommendation from the Facilities Department this evening is to hold on Blue Oak and Sherwood and to consider funding Inspire. Open that up for questions.
Thank you, Julie, for the presentation. I, when I went through the Inspire application, one of the things that I wanted to express as a Board member is that as the other charters are looking at making application for these funds, to use the Inspire model of complete information as something that we want to see. And yes, I'm in support of approving Inspire, but it's, a lot of it has to do with the completeness of, excuse me, the hiccups of their application. And it, there are so many variables, I know, and they, they, Inspire has used consultants to put this together properly. But once it's done, and it is, let's use that as a model for what we would expect from the other charters. The scope will be different because the charter sizes are different, but, and the projects will be different. But that's my request.
I also think at this point, it's useful to just remind the public that this particular process we're using to score and then allocate funds from the bond sales is different than what we've done before. So we, as a Board, are still, and as a staff, are still going to be kind of feeling our way through this. That said, yeah, I really, strange to say, you enjoy reading it, reading a funding request, but the Inspire one was very well put together. I am, I think Sherwood raises a lot of really good points about how they are sharing with Chapman and what that will look like as we move forward with our own rebuild on the Chapman site. So I think waiting to get a little more information from them makes a lot of sense as well. Any other questions or comments from the Board? If we don't have any from the Board, I know we have some representatives here from the schools. Is there any public comment on this item? It's okay, Julie, are you done? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Yes, I'm done.
You're still up there. Is there any public comment? Thank you, guys. Okay, seeing none. Can look one more time. And also, just for the Board's point, we can't separate this into separate motions if we need to, if it's too clunky to have, you know, all these three recommendations wrapped up into one. But do we have any motions associated with this item at this point?
I motion that we approve the application for Measure C funding for Inspire as presented.
Seconded.
Mr. Chairman, were you one in a second, or did you second?
I did second. Yes. Thank you. That said, is there any further discussion or debate specifically about the motion on the table, which is regarding Inspire? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a voice vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No, that appears to be unanimous. Are there any other motions associated with this topic? So in there being no other motions, we have not approved the other two. And my understanding is that Ms. Kissel, you and your department are in talks with those schools about bringing those back possibly in June?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, as long as it's not a surprise to anybody, it sounds like everyone knows what they're We are safe to move on to the next item, I believe. Yeah? All right.
I was laughing at your comment that we looked like we knew what we were doing.
I just want to make sure that we're not surprising anybody by saying, oh, we're not going to fund this this time around, and here's why. I assume that Julie's had those conversations ahead of time. That's all I meant. No, everyone knows, you know, what we're doing. We're going to move on to item 10.2.3. This is a discussion action item regarding guaranteed project cost approval for Inspire at the Fremont Street Canyon View project.
Thank you. As you know, we brought on Modern Building Company as our lease-leaseback entity for this project, and we're pursuing the lease-leaseback delivery method because we knew we needed a lot of upfront work on the project, as far as bidding out all of the trades on the project, figuring out the schedule, figuring out the modular building, manufacturing, and delivery, as well as scheduling a couple of crazy summers to get this project completed. And Modern is here tonight in support of the project, and we're happy to have them as a partner. We also have a group of people from Inspire here tonight. This is kind of the last big hurdle, bringing forward this guaranteed maximum price, this guaranteed project cost. As you know, we initially bid it in April, and then almost all of the scopes were bid again on May 8th. That's why you didn't have the number in front of you before tonight, because we had to compile all of those bids over the last few days. So tonight, the number that we'll be entering contract with, with Modern Building Company for guaranteed project cost of $33,916,954 for a new school for Inspire School of Arts and Sciences. And we'll open it up to any questions that you might have.
Does the Board have any questions regarding this one? I'm just excited to get this done before the cost. I mean, right, the longer we wait, the more costs go up, and you guys have been waiting a long time for this. So I have no questions, except how quickly can we get shovels in the ground? Anybody else? No? Seeing none, is there public comment on this item? Okay. Is there a motion associated with this item? So the motion you're looking, the action you're looking for, what's that? Yeah. The action you're looking for is just to approve the, how do you word that? Approve the project cost?
Yes.
Approve, the guaranteed project cost as elucidated here. Okay. Anyone want to make that their motion?
Sure.
Okay.
I motion that we approve the guaranteed project cost approval for Inspire School.
I'll second that motion.
All right. A motion from Member Hayes and a second from Member Robinson. Any further debate? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Awesome. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. That is, it's been a long road.
Thank you.
Now, this is really exciting, you guys. Thank you. Switching gears a little bit, we are on to 1024. I think it's what I take off, by all means. Have a wonderful night. Thank you for staying so long.
Thank you.
Take care, you guys. 1024 is discussion action, approval of conceptual designs to proceed with schematic design and construction documents through completion for Chapman Parkview and Rosedale new construction projects.
Thank you. So at our last meeting, you were presented with the concepts that were developed by the architect. And now they have gone and put a proposal together to move to the next step of the project, which would be schematic design for each school. So tonight, we are here to get your approval for DLR Architects to proceed with construction documents, schematic drawings, all the way through construction, administration, and closeout for the sum of $9,24,875 for all three schools.
Any questions for Ms. Kissel or the rest of the staff?
So what this is doing is, is they're going to create the schematics for each of these three.
Yes, that is correct.
And that's what, that's what we're approving.
Right.
Okay.
It's the schematic drawings, then the, there's a step, there's a stopping point at each phase where they will create schematic design, and then we have a check-in. And then they will continue with construction documents, and then we have a check-in. And then they go out for bid, and we have a check-in with the Board. So, you know, at each one of those phases. But the $9 million fee gets us all the way through construction for their services.
The question mark is up again.
The question mark is up again. I just wanted to comment that in working with the DLR Group and attending those meetings, first at Rosedale and then Parkview, you saw an evolution of, they're taking the input that they were hearing and coming back with that input representing what the staff and parents and others that had attended those meetings were expressing. And I just wanted to, to say thank you to the architects for being responsive to what was being requested.
Any further questions of clarification? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Is there a motion associated with this item? The requested action is approval, is approval of the conceptual design and authorization to proceed.
I move approval. I'll second.
All right. We have a motion by Member Robinson, a second by Member Olson. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. All right. Well, we just spent $40 million, you guys. That's pretty exciting. Sorry, it's getting to the point, it's 9:30. I'm starting to turn to a pumpkin. I'll try and keep it together. We are on to item 10.2.5, which is approval of conceptual designs and authorization to proceed with schematic design and construction, this time for Citrus.
Thank you. So similar to the item that you just discussed, the same presentation was provided at our last meeting regarding the concepts that have been developed for Citrus Elementary School. And I'm asking tonight for your approval for Leonakis Architects to do the same. Move into schematic drawings through construction documents and then to DSA approval and construction. The amount that they are asking for that service is $1,672,720.
Would I be correct in assuming that the amount is so much lower because it's only one school and because we're not doing a full rebuild on Citrus, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the Board?
I do have a question. So is the Board, I had asked Kelly about this, are we going to see like architectural, I say plans, like we got to see the vision for the other architects of what, you know, Rosedale might look like and Parkview and Chapman? And I guess, I realize though Citrus isn't being, you know, isn't a rebuild, I still would love to see like, what are they thinking of for flooring? And what are they thinking of for lighting? And what are they thinking of for the projects that, that are going to be covered? Are we going to see that at some point?
Yes, we typically don't bring all of that detail to the Board, you know, down to the type of flooring that's selected. But we'd be more than happy to share with you and the rest of the Board whatever you want to see. Or you can come and look at it at our office and we can discuss it, if not everyone wants to hear it out of Board meeting.
So you're, you already have it?
Oh, no, not yet. It's not developed yet.
Okay.
We're just in the baby steps.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering what they're picturing to like maintain the integrity of the historical site, but also, you know, make it, you know, updated and more lovely.
Me too. We're on, we're on the same boat there. We're very interested to see what kind of ideas they come up with. And we do have several successful projects under our belt with both of these architects, and we have a lot of confidence in their creativity and their abilities.
Yep.
And typically, in the past, we have seen at each step, more and more closer to actualized images and documents, and I'm sure that will be the case here as well. As Julie said last time, there's always kind of those stop, stopping points of, okay, where are we now and get more Board approval, I'm sure at those points.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not looking like for floor samples. I'm looking for like, what a general idea, like, right? Like gym floors aren't always this color, right? People have different visions for, you know, different spaces, and that's, I guess, what? I'm not looking for fabric swatches and paint chips. I'm wanting to say, what, what are y'all, what are you thinking of, just generally?
Yeah, I also look forward to seeing what they come up with. It's a good, it's a good question. Thank you. Is there any public comment on 10.2.5 regarding Citrus?
Can I ask just one question?
Please, of course.
I'm, I'm just assuming, I just want to make sure that my thinking is right, that staff at the site has been consulted and like offered their wish list, if you will?
Yes, very much so. We've had several meetings with their steering committee, which represents each grade level, special education, food service, and the administration. And custodial.
Right on. All right, so we've got, there was no public comment on this one. Any further questions or clarification? Yeah, please.
Just for a point of interest to anyone, there is a, a nice description of what they're doing and how it's going to come back to us on pages, where it says basic services and some other, there's a lot of, there's a lot of detail in that part of the presentation for the agenda, if you're looking for more specifics on what the vision is.
What page at the top are you looking at?
Two.
One of the two?
Yeah, I think she's looking at basic services on page two. Am I right about that?
Huh?
You're looking at the basic services section of the...
Yes, I'm, I'm looking at exactly where it comes from Leonakis to Ms. Kissel with the description of what they're doing and what the visions of, you know, what they're going to include and what they're not going to include. It's just more information. It's just more information.
On page one, they discuss, um, what's going to happen on the site, what's going to be newly constructed, um, what the site work entails, and what the modernization entails, and then it walks through all of these, um, steps, these check-in points that I discussed previously, so the schematic design, and then the design development, the construction drawings, the submittal to the state architect, bidding and negotiations, and then construction.
I just found that very helpful in getting an idea of what we were doing and how it was going to work, so we would know when to expect, you know, and what we're expecting, just to let you and them know that that presentation of information, as a board member, it was helpful.
I'll let them know, thank you.
All right, do we have any further, uh, questions of clarification for Ms. Kissel? Seeing none. Do we have a motion associated with this topic?
I move approval of, I'm looking, sir, for the, um, is there an identifying number?
No, it's not a resolution, it's item ten two five.
Thank you. I move approval of item ten two five.
I'll, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Member Robinson, a second from Vice President Conkin. Any further debate on this one? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much, Ms. Kissel. And this one, a late addition, um, we have a very similar item, we're looking at architect selection for the building D reconstruction construction at P V.
Thank you. So, um, we're in an emergency situation with the fire at Pleasant Valley High School. We know that we are going to have to reconstruct the building, we don't know to what extent yet, whether the building will have to be demolished, or if there are parts of the building that can remain, and then we build around, build it back the way it was before. We do know that we need an architect, and we need one really quickly. So we put out a request for qualifications, uh, to architects, uh, we advertised it in the newspaper, they were due yesterday. We received two, uh, statements of qualifications, one from Nichols Melberg and Rosetto here in town, Chico, and the other from H M C Architects out of Sacramento. I read both of the statements of qualifications, and my recommendation is that we go with H M C Architects out of Sacramento. Their former name was Rainforth Grau, R G A. Although both, both architects do have experience on the Pleasant Valley High School campus, which is a plus for both of them, H M C Architects just finished renovating that building less than two years ago, so they are extremely familiar with it, and we're going to have a very expedited process. And the information in the statement of qualifications was very compelling, that they understand what we need to do. There's a D S A rebuild program that they mentioned, that they're familiar with. They have already, um, created an appointment with the state architect's office, just in case they're selected tonight, so that they can hit the ground running right away. The other architect mentioned the building one time in their statement of qualifications, and did not indicate that they were familiar with the D S A rebuild program, which comes into play in these types of emergency situations. We do really like both firms, but we feel strongly that H M C, uh, will serve the district very well in this situation. So that's my recommendation this evening.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Kissel on this one, you guys?
Not a question, but thank you for the thorough explanation, I appreciate that.
Yes, same. Do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Uh, do we have a motion regarding item ten two six?
I move approval of acceptance of the bid from H M C Architects for the D building reconstruction construction project. Boy, that was an exciting night. I, I was very close to that fire, both times. It was quite spectacular. And I had, what I com, I'm sorry, I commented that night that I thought, oh my gosh, I just watched the reconstruction of D building, because I, you know, we were, we were involved in approving, um, when we got that grant, and then had to stand there and watch it all burn.
Pretty sad night, for sure.
Yes, it was.
I'll second.
Very well, we have a motion by Member Robinson, and a second by Member Hayes, and it's H M C, is, who used to be Rainforth Grau?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Uh, any further discussion or debate on this topic? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous, and we will move on to, what are we on, ten two seven now, which is bid approval for, yeah, it's, it's all, it's the Julie Kissel Show.
Seven in a row.
Bid approval for the restroom projects, package A.
Okay, so we have divided the restroom, district-wide restroom projects into, uh, manageable bites, and the first project that went out for bid was package A, and it includes, uh, renovations at Chico High School, Chico Junior High School, Emma Wilson, and Little Chico Creek Elementary School.
My bedtime reminder just fell off.
So we received three bids, um, Randy Hill Construction, United Building Contractors, and Geno Construction, all local firms that we've had successful projects with. Randy Hill Construction made an error in their bid form. Each public bid is required to, uh, have a subcontractor list, where subcontractors who are being, uh, included in the bid, that are performing more than one-half of one percent of the project must be listed, and there is really no wiggle room unless the general contractor says, I'm going to self-perform that work, which we have had that come up a couple of times. But in this case, uh, Randy Hill Construction is not, um, licensed to perform that work, it's abatement of lead, so, um, he had to step away, and then our second low bidder was United Building Contractors. So tonight, we are asking you to award the project to the lowest responsive bidder, United Building Contractors, in the amount of one million, one million seven hundred ninety-four thousand dollars.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, do we have public comment on this item? In the absence of that, do we have a motion regarding item ten two seven?
I motion that, um, the bid approval go to United Building Contractors for the district restroom projects, package A.
I'll second that motion.
All right, motion by Member Hayes, second by Member Robinson. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Julie, for everything, we're almost done with you here. Let's look at item ten point two point eight, which is the charter schools Measure K project requests for this, this go-round.
Okay, so the last Monday of May, the Measure K Charter School Facility Committee met and brought forward, uh, five projects for me to present to you this evening. Corebut, as you know, is building a new track and field on their campus, um, so they're bringing forward three requests, one for a new multi-sport scoreboard, one for discus netting and softball bases, and then one for removable field lighting system. So the costs that are represented in their request are for portions of that equipment that, um, can be removed and moved to another location, admittedly not easily, but none of the underground, um, footings, concrete, rebar, electrical conduit, none of that is included in these costs. Those will be on Corebut to fund themselves, and the above-ground equipment will be funded by Measure K. And then Sherwood Montessori School had a cost overrun on a project that they brought to you previously for a new bard unit, um, heating and air conditioning unit that goes on the back of one of their portables that they had to replace, so they're asking for two thousand dollars additional for that, and for, um, several security cameras for their, their campus that's on the Chapman property. There has been many situations where, uh, both Chapman and Sherwood have wished that they had good, uh, cameras around the campus, so they could see the goings-ons, and so they think that, um, this would be a great project for both, the security of both schools, and I agree with them. So we're bringing forward those five projects for your review and hopeful approval tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I, I did have a question, um, so on the, um, the Corebut, um, uh, if you go to the attachment for, for that one, um, a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars is circled, and then it's replaced by a hundred and thirty, and then on the next page, it's, um, the one ninety-five is struck out, and one, a hundred and thirty, and then below that, can you explain that?
Yes, they were asking for the whole installation, and when we met at their meeting, I indicated that I couldn't bring forward a recommendation for underground, um, electrical and conduits and footings that are not movable.
I see, okay, thank you.
So that's why they're reduced.
Got you. Thank you.
Um, do we know, I'm trying to figure out, will these, uh, sports equipment and, uh, facilities upgrades at Corebut be used by any organizations other than Corebut?
I'm glad you asked that question, because, um, I just spoke with their, uh, director, superintendent, principal, uh, a couple weeks ago, and she said their facilities are used all the time. Their gymnasium is used all the time by community groups, and they expect that their track and field and stadium will also be utilized by the community, just like Chico Unified facilities are used all the time.
So will there be, do they anticipate facility use fees and things like that, or is this, don't, are these donated? Uh, I'm just curious.
They are allowed, just like we are to, um, collect actual costs, how is that worded? Actual costs.
And from my point of view, that's all well and good. I remain nervous about upgrading a facility on a church campus, um, and the potential entanglement that that brings. So I would, it would be frustrating to find out that it was primarily used, for instance, for church activities, um, when it wasn't being used by the school, and I, it's a line, it's a very fine line, and one continues to make me uncomfortable.
I have no knowledge of the church using the property that the school rents from them, um, but we can certainly investigate that. I know that the timeline for these items, getting them on order, you know, for the timeline of their construction project is very important, but, um, we can certainly ask.
Well, it's awkward, because I don't want to, you know, I'm not trying to single out any one group, I just, there are, you know, um, significant constitutional issues about where public money goes. So I was just curious, honestly. I hear you saying that they're going to be used like any other school facility where other outside community organizations can come and use it, and I love that, that's awesome. These are public spaces, and that's my concern, is it, you know, is, is it on what is actually public land? No, so how do they manage, who gets to? Does the organization that owns the land they're on get some say in who uses those facilities? And, I don't know the answer to that one. Do you? Like, could the church say, no, this outside eight group can't come in to use the school facilities?
I don't know the answer to that.
All right. Um, I believe that is worth investigating. I'm not going to say no to this, but, uh, I would hate to find out that, um, we were exposing ourselves to any potential, um, litigation in the future for building facilities that were controlled, where access was controlled by someone other than us.
President Lando, I share your concern, just to let Ms. Kissel know that there is another board member with that same concern. I also have a concern about whether or not you have any experience with the particular, um, scoreboard, sports field, specialties, field lighting, how removable are they? You know, I, I just, this doesn't, it doesn't quite fit a definition of something that you would consider removable, and that concerns me.
Admittedly, it's not easy. Uh, I can use an example, uh, when we renovated Pleasant Valley High School Stadium across the street, it already had lighting, and we replaced its lighting. So we took down the poles, we took down the lights, um, and we stored them at the corp yard.
Right.
And then we donated them to the, uh, the bike guys, the motor, motocross, BMX track, and then they didn't take them. Uh, so, um, they're still sitting there in the yard. So you can take them down and store them, and then install them elsewhere. Scoreboard's very similar.
Okay.
Um, I gotta say that, um, this is one of the issues with bond dollars being utilized for all of our charter schools and those that are not on Chico Unified property, it's really, really hard for them to spend their dollars. So it's, it's difficult to, um, you know, assess what can be, what can be done. So yes, it's difficult, but yes, it can be done.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kissel.
So I, uh, just texted Mary Cox, the CEO at Core, and she said, it is our facility, the church has no say, we rent it from them on a thirty-year lease, they cannot dictate who uses the field or our equipment.
Good, thank you. If you're watching right now, thank you very much, Mary, I appreciate you getting back to us so quickly, and I do, I love Mary, she's a great human being. Okay.
She's on it.
Having said all that, any other questions for staff?
Yeah.
Do we have any public comment on this one? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the Project Recommendation Committee, is that what they're called?
I'll second that.
Measure K Charter School Facilities Committee.
Yes.
All right. I hear a motion from Member Robinson, and a second from Vice President Conkin. Any further debate on this one? And thank you all for your patience while we air our concerns. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, is that it for you, Ms. Kissel?
I think it is.
You did it.
I think it is.
Good job, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So we are moving, oh, wait a second, I don't, oh, this is, this is Ms. Kruger next, all right. Moving on to ten point two point nine, which is Resolution sixteen ninety-two dash two five, this is an emergency declaration that requires procurement of restoration services and replacement equipment regarding P V.
Yes, so as you're fully aware, we had the fire at Pleasant Valley High School on April twenty-fifth, so the resolution in front of you this evening is asking at least four fifths of the board to approve that there was an emergency, and what this resolution would allow is for expedited procurement of our restoration services of measure, of building D, um, once we can get in, um, as well as replacement equipment. So a concern is that, um, August is right around the corner, and with Lee- So a concern is that August is right around the corner, and with lead time for getting some of the technology that was in our digital arts classrooms ordered, and here by August for our teachers that we would need to order that immediately, and with board meetings, the next board meeting not being until June 18th, and then a regular until July 30th, I believe, those large gaps in time could inhibit our ability to order the requirements that our teachers need for their classrooms. So this resolution allows for that expedited, those orderings to be done in between the board meetings. It will require that I come back at every regular board meeting going forward and give an update on that for the June and July meeting, and then back in August with the resolution to hopefully dissolve at that point.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, the quick version. Anybody have questions about this, Jaclyn? Any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion on this item?
I motion to approve.
I'll second that. All right, we have a motion by Member Olson, a second by Member Lando. All those, any debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. All right, let's move on to Item 1031. This is a human resources item. We are looking at adoption of the student calendar for the 27-28 school year.
Thank you, President Lando. So this is the annual adoption of the student calendar. We try to adopt these three years out, so staff and students, and mainly parents, have that information so they can, they can plan future events.
Very good. I think we've all looked at this already. Anybody find anything we need to change or argue about?
I'll just comment that I, when I'm, when I'm looking at the calendar, it's a long slog from September the 6th. Well, luckily, there's, there's the 12th put in there, which is the former Columbus Day. I was like, well, at least they threw him a bone there. But man, October, September to basically until you get to November 11th is such a long, hard go of it for teachers and for students. And I think that we might want to see if there, I don't know, I know Charlie's gone, but there might be some discussion about the feasibility of doing something, even if it's just a long weekend, to give a break to both students and staff. And whether it would be actually increased attendance and, you know, cut down on, on just being out of class because you're just exhausted, so.
Member Robinson, you had a comment?
That, what you just expressed is exactly what we've looked at as we've tried to do exactly what you suggested every time. And because the calendar is set up so that they're trying to equalize the number of days in the first semester and the number of days in the second semester, and breaking the holidays, and it, it doesn't usually work. If somebody comes up with a change that will do that, we can do it after tonight, so.
I wasn't proposing that. I guess one of, yeah.
No, you're, but you're exactly right, on target with what is, is in the minds of everybody that's setting up this, this calendar each time, is the length of time without a break.
Well, in, in response to your comment of having equal first and second semesters, I will just say that I've never felt like having a second semester that was longer than the first is a disadvantage because there's all of the state testing and AP testing. And, you know, as an English teacher, so typically, English and social science teachers teach all students, and so it's often that kids are pulled from your class to go do the state mandated testing. And so having a longer second semester was helpful because we actually lost instructional minutes with those kids because they were testing. And so that-
I would like to clarify, just if I could interject, in the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the calendar, you will see that the second semester is almost two weeks longer
Almost two weeks longer.
To accommodate exactly what you're describing.
Yep.
And I would also like to add that we do have the November 5th Elementary People Free Day, and we have some elementary minimum days to address some of that. But yes, it is a, and honest, candidly, in the second semester, we used to have an extremely long period of time from February to April, spring break, until we moved spring break up to match Chico State. So, yes, it is a, it's a long, it's a long haul.
It is.
After all that, is there any public comment on this item? All right, do we have a motion?
Move approval.
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Member Robinson, a second by Member Hayes. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you all. Item, what is it, 1032 is our declaration for the need for fully qualified educators.
Thank you, President Lando. So each year, we bring to you a declaration related to the insufficient number of certificated staff who meet the specified employment criteria. Most of the time, this, these are estimates, most of the time, these are people that are currently working for us that would like to continue working for us because they're doing a fantastic job. And this declaration, while an estimate of a declaration of need, does give us the freedom to continue with those folks working in those positions, and then also recruit when we start to get into July and August when we're struggling to fill positions.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions on this one? All right, any public comment?
Come on, public.
Do we have a, you care. I know you do. Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Okay, very good. A second by Member Conken, and a motion by Member Robinson. Thank you. Any further debate? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one is unanimous. Thank you very much. 1033 is Resolution 1688-25, the elimination of classified staff due to lack of worker funds.
Thank you. So I'm here to present the Resolution 1688-25, and basically, it's elimination of some positions. So we're cleaning up our, basically, our position control, and after a while, we replace positions, they go up and down, things like that. We always confer with CSEA, our union, and these are, this is the list that we came up with of, so they don't have to budget for it for next year. So just kind of cleaning up.
And I always ask this, are there any people involved in?
There are no people involved.
Love to hear.
That would be a different discussion.
Absolutely.
Very different.
Just making sure, and it's always that case, but I always have to ask. That is a very different discussion. Okay. Any further questions?
No, but thank you for clarifying that for, for me and the public.
We will ask that every time.
Every time.
We try to keep track of, very carefully, when we have to let anybody go.
Well, and I'd also like to say thanks for taking the time to clean it up.
All right. Any public comment? Seeing none, do we have a motion? I will move approval of Resolution 1688-25.
I second.
All right, motion by Lando, second by Hayes, by a hair. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. It is unanimous. Thank you, and you're going to stick around for Resolution 1689-25.
Absolutely. So this is our unrepresented groups, so the school aides and parent aides and assistant superintendent of business services. So again, cleaning up either a lack of work or a lack of funds is why they're here. So again, just, there's nobody in these positions, and that's the reason why we're here.
All right. Thank you. Questions? Public comment?
No, she's reading.
Yep. Do we have a motion?
I motion approve.
Go ahead.
I motion approval of 1689-25.
I'll second.
Oh, is that? Thank you. Okay. Very good. We have a motion by Hayes and a second by Olson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think that was the last we need from you, right? We are on to Item 1041, which is our approval of revised, updated board policies.
So this is our second reading of the policies. The board has had the opportunity to review these and the opportunity to ask questions. So at this point, we're bringing the board policies forward, and we are ready to either discuss or approve whatever the will of the board is.
I suspect we do have some conversation about this one. Anybody? No? Are we good?
I just, I just wanted to clarify the, the, the one that Jaclyn provided the, the change for. Jaclyn, if you could read that, and then I would like to ask questions about it.
Certainly.
Yeah.
So-
Which number is this, please?
Ms. Hayes is referring to Board Policy 3100.
3100, thank you.
Entitled Budget. And on page three, under Reserve Balance, there is a sentence added in the first paragraph that says, "In addition, the board voted to add an additional 2% reserve for economic
Boy, we did that a long time ago, didn't we?
Yep, it's been policy for a long time. But what was your question regarding specifically?
Yeah, so let me clarify. The board did do that a long time ago, and you did it through the budget process, but it was never reflected in board policy. And there was a suggestion made by the board to put that into policy. And because it is what the board did, I mean, and it is now a policy of the board, it made perfect sense to do that. So thank you, Ms. Hayes, for pointing that out. And Ms. Krueger rewrote that so that it would reflect what the board has already acted on, on the budget side.
And, and the reason I, I did that is that in the school district in which I teach, there, the school board also adopted language to, to mandate that the CBO maintain a higher balance than the 3% mandated by the state. And so I was actually surprised when, when I asked, it was one of the very first questions I asked Jaclyn, was, does the board require that there be extra funds set aside? And she said 2%. And I was like, really? Because the CSBA recommendation is far higher than that, and the board where I work went with the CSBA recommendation. And I was curious, like, it, personally, I look at it and I think, 2%, when the 3% is mandated, 2% more, it's not even double. And so 3% is like you're holding on by your fingernails. And so I look at the 2%, and I, I guess I would like to ask you, do you think that three, that 2% is adequate now, especially since, as Member Robinson points out, that it was done some time ago?
Yeah, great question. So when it was done at the time, basically, that 5% was one month of payroll. And that was kind of the board's rationale, was we need at least, right, a minimum of one month of payroll in the event that there are deferrals from the state or there's budgetary constraints at that point in time. So I did do a little bit of math. Right now, this 5% is about $11 million, and our payroll last month was $14.6 million. So we would need an additional 4% or a total of 7% to cover one month of payroll essentially right now. That would be my recommendation. That would get you through one month, and we are seeing glimpses of the governor's budget. That was released today. I've read, I think, two emails about it, and he is continuing to do deferrals again, which is your money in June will pay you in July. So it is, that cash flow piece is something the district will have to monitor.
On that note, remind me that we have in the past run into a problem where we've had too much money unallocated, right?
So the board has taken action for very specific items, and they've set aside money for very specific items. So that is above and beyond this reserve. So those items historically have been like the volatility with the Personsterr's rate and our attendance rate, as well as, I think we've had some IT infrastructure money very specifically. So that's above and beyond what this economic uncertainties reserve would be.
I guess I would just say that if, in, in recent history, if there was ever a time of economic uncertainty, this might be the time. And so I, I would, I would say that, you know that I'm very strongly, you know, I'm a union president in my, in my district, and I certainly am mindful of bargaining units. And, and yet, what we all want is to get a paycheck. Every, you know, we want to make sure that everybody gets paid. There's nobody in our employee that doesn't count on being paid. And so I really do think that if you, we don't have a one month set aside for payroll, I don't think that that's probably meeting the needs of our, of our district and our staff. So, so if, I would like to say that if 2% is no longer appropriate, I'm hoping that the board would, I would like to say that I would support having the policy save a 4% in addition to the 3%.
I think that's a worthwhile conversation. I'm not sure it's something I want to commit to right now without looking at where the money would come from and what we wouldn't be paying for by paying into the reserve.
Is that a question mark? I, thank you. I, I agree that it's something we need to consider. What I would like to know, what you've done to build the budgets and bring them to us, assumed the 5%, the 3 and the 2.
Yes, that's correct.
Before we did anything, I'd like to have another information sharing where you can show us what you'd have to do with the budget hours in order to make that change. The May revise came with a 2%. Was that what you just said? Because I tried to find it and couldn't find it.
The May revision was released today.
Yeah.
I've received two emails that have given really quick blurbs about what's in it, but I'm hopefully, I have a Zoom tomorrow, that hopefully I can learn a little bit more about that.
Yeah, because I, I couldn't get anything that made sense. Not that the May revise is going to make sense.
So what I can say is when we do bring the budget forward, we have these items that the board's already taken action on.
Right.
And then we have a 3% and the additional 2%, but there are still monies at the bottom of the budget that basically say unappropriated. So they're not designated for a particular item or specific use. So if we increase the 2% to 4%, it would just make that value smaller.
And that keeps the money- That keeps us okay, too, with the Prop 98 restriction, the-
Yes, it does.
Okay.
What I can do, well, I-
No, please, can you hear that thought?
I was going to say, what I can do is at the next board meeting, June 18th, the original budget for '25, '26 will be coming forward.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And what we can do is, assuming the policy gets changed, we can certainly put the 4% in, or I can bring two different versions for the board, one at 2% and one at 4%.
At that time-
I'd like to see the two different versions.
Well, at that time, then, would we, would we go ahead and change the board policy again? I mean, is there any, I mean, even though we have the first reading or the second reading tonight, and it's been revised, there's nothing that would keep us from revising it again in June?
As long as it's on the agenda, we can.
Or we can postpone the vote on this item. We can table this, bring it back at the next board meeting.
Just for the 3100?
For just this one item.
I think that's probably the best way to do it.
Yep.
Okay.
Because I would say the other changes within the policy are grammatical, I think, and one ed code provision that talks about equity multiplier funding. So it could work, it could wait till June 18th if the board decides to table.
Okay. Thank you. That was fruitful. Any other questions of clarification on this? Okay. Thank you. That was fruitful. Any other questions of clarification on this one? Uh, which is again, an item regarding all of the, uh, um, new policies. So, um, given that, it sounds like maybe there's going to be a motion to adopt all policies except thirty-one hundred. Do we have any motion like that, or any motion at all?
I so move, Mr. President.
Okay, so the motion on the table, it's, I'll, I'll second that just to get the discussion underway. Um, the motion on the table is to approve all of the revised and updated policies except Policy thirty-one hundred.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further debate or discussion about that? Everybody's clear? Okay. Public comment? I think I missed that step, but I know that you care about this. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, so, um, do we need to make a motion regarding specifically asking thirty-one hundred to come back in June? Is that, will that be? We had it in, it was part of this motion? Good. Glad that it was understood. All right, are there any further items from the floor? Uh, we have no board member request to adjournize items. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
That is more than three. We are adjourned. And thank you all for your patience and hard work today.